Okay, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors for Wednesday, July 22, 2020. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll and establish your quorum?
Supervisors Frost.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Serna.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, July 26 at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. This meeting is also broadcast live on KUBU Radio on 96.5 FM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any local library branch.
Thank you. Supervisor Natoli, will you do us the honor of leading us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. In compliance with directives of the County State and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the CDC, this meeting is livestream and closed to the public. Temporary procedures are subject to change pursuant to guidelines related to social distancing and minimizing person-to-person contact. To make a verbal comment at today's meeting, and you're welcome to do so, please dial 916-875-2500 to register your contact information. A deputy clerk will contact you and transfer you into the meeting when it is your turn to make a public comment. Written comments are also welcome. You may send your email comment to boardclerk@saccounty.net, and SAC County is S-A-C-C-O-U-N-T-Y. You can make a comment online at BOSSPublicMeetingsAllStrungTogether.SACCounty.net. Your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record. And with that, please call our one and only item.
Okay. Item one is the American River Ag Williamson Act cancellation. It's a request to cancel the portion of Williamson Act Contract 01APO1 on the contracted subject parcel located at 875 Alfalfa Plant Road in the Delta Community. The environmental document is a prior environmental impact report.
Okay, before we hear from staff, let me just ask the clerk, do we have any public commenters on this item?
We do. We had at least 36 when I first arrived in the chambers.
Okay, is that 36, including written and/or folks that will be phoning in?
No, that's just for the folks who are going to make a verbal comment. I don't have the number of your total written comments just yet, but I can provide that.
I just want to note for the record that we are in possession of a number of written comments.
Yes.
Okay. And then another matter of housekeeping, I'd like, before we hear from Chris Bohulie, just to hear briefly from County Council's office, to make absolutely clear to all parties, both the proponent and the opposition to the matters before the board today, what precisely we are considering deliberating and voting on.
Thank you, Mr. Serna. This is a bit of an unusual, complicated matter because we're combining use permit or intermingling use permit requests combined with the Williamson Act cancellation. It's just, it's a little messier than normal. So what happened here is that in February of 2019, American River Ag submitted a use permit application for their facility. Subsequently to that, planning determined that there was a Williamson Act contract that was in place over the subject parcel. And I provided legal advice to planning and advised that the use, the current use, was not consistent with the Williamson Act contract. Consistent with my advice, the planning director, LeAnn Moffitt, issued a written planning director's determination that she couldn't process the use permit application, which was under her authority as the planning director, because of the inconsistency with the Williamson Act contract. She provided in that letter an opportunity to appeal, and the appeal pursuant to the zoning code is to the Board of Zoning Appeals. I'm certain the board members know this, but the Board of Zoning Appeals is the last stop. So if the BZA makes a decision, it can only be challenged in court. It doesn't go to the Board of Supervisors. So they did, American River Ag, did file an appeal from that planning director's determination, and it was scheduled to be heard before the Board of Zoning Appeals. Before that hearing, I engaged in some meetings with the applicant's side, and apparently they made a determination that they preferred to go the route of pursuing a cancellation of the Williamson Act contract rather than submitting to the Board of Zoning Appeals whether Ms. Moffitt's determination was incorrect. So they withdrew their appeal to the Board of Zoning Appeals. And the time now to appeal that has long since lapsed. That was last summer. So we, so what, the application that is before the board today is to cancel the Williamson Act contract, but we received a letter, I actually only just received the letter today, but it was submitted apparently a couple of days ago from Pioneer Law Group on behalf of the applicants, arguing in the alternative that the board instead should today make a determination that their uses are consistent with the existing Williamson Act contract. And their argument is, argument is that only the Board of Supervisors has the authority to interpret its own Williamson Act contract. So new argument, I mean, I knew that they were, hadn't quite abandoned that argument, but they've never laid it out before until I actually just received this at about noon today. My initial response to this would be that these are arguments that they should have raised back last summer when Ms. Moffitt issued her planning director determination, and they could have pursued that appeal and argued then that she didn't have authority to make that determination, or they could have done something different. But now, there is no mechanism for the Board of Supervisors to interpret the contract. There simply isn't an entitlement for the board to interpret a contract, and that's not what's before the board in any event. So my, again, I got this letter very recently, have not had an opportunity to review all of their authorities, but obviously I've been involved in this for a couple of years, and my initial thought is that they have waived any argument that the current Williamson Act contract is, that the uses are not consistent with their current contract. And all that is before the board today is whether the board can make the findings to cancel the contract.
Thank you for that clarification. So, again, just to be clear, that's all we are considering today is up or down on the cancellation of the Williamson Act contract, whether or not the applicant chooses to pursue a use permit or any other subsequent entitlement that they may or may not wish to pursue. That would have to happen at a different time, appropriately noticed. If nothing else, we couldn't even act on anything but this today. My understanding is because of open meeting and no scene laws.
Right. So the use, certainly the use, if the board determines today to cancel the Williamson Act contract, they still have to go back through the entire process for a use permit, which obviously is not a given. They'd have to go back through that regardless. But their current ask is that the board today make a determination that the use is compatible. And in my view, that is not before the board today, and they waived that argument back last summer, so.
All right, thank you. Supervisor Natoli?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chair. Just appreciate, Chris, you know, updating this to kind of like some of the current information being received in your work on this. Chris, I wanted to be clear, just to the point here, and you just spoke to the pursuit of a use permit. That would be in the event that the board would take the action to cancel the contract. If the contract were not canceled and sustained, then that option, under the interpretation of a year ago, the planning director was that, you know, it was not compatible with the contract, and therefore, whatever application would be sought to get a use permit to go through that entire process, that's not an open door.
Right. That will fore, if the board decides today not to cancel the contract, then the option to pursue a use permit will be foreclosed. Obviously, you know, presuming that they don't challenge it in court.
Right, some other court challenge. But as far as relative to our structure of how we would consider those matters, so. Okay, thank you very much.
Correct.
Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you. Along the same lines, just to be crystal clear here as much as we can, if the board were to not cancel the Williamson contract, they would still be not in conformity as far as the land use that they're currently doing, right? So they'd still have to go through the process.
Right. So, I mean, Chris may want to weigh in on that, but, right, so right now we have a use that we are saying, actually, maybe Chris should respond to that.
Yeah, so currently, the use or the, yes, the use that they are engaging in is not allowed. It's conditionally allowed in our zoning code, and that's our interpretation. So if the contract is upheld and not allowed to be canceled, then they will have to cease operations on the site.
And do they have any recourse to, as far as, is there any process or procedure that they could go through to become a conforming use? Say that the Williamson Act were to stay? Either way?
No.
Okay. All right.
Well, I will say one thing. They did file, along with their application, as was required for a cancellation petition, they did file a notice of nonrenewal, but it takes nine years for that to get entirely out of the contract.
Right. Thank you.
Supervisor Frost?
My understanding is that each of the Williamson Act land, Williamson Act contracts are individual contracts.
Right.
So theirs might be different than someone else's.
We form preserves by contract rather than, some other counties do it differently.
And the information you're giving us is specific to their specific contract.
Right.
And when they enter into a Williamson Act contract, do they give up any of their rights to withdraw, given, under the circumstance of, as long as they withdraw under approvable, you know, without impacting the rest of the Williamson Act land around them? I guess what I'm asking is, do they, is there anything that limits them from making a choice to exit the Williamson Land, Williamson Act, other than the conditions of withdrawal, which are stipulated clearly?
There's statutory, pretty detailed statutory provisions, and generally, the rule is that you're in the contract for the term, which is 10 years at least. But the ways you can get out is you can do a notice of nonrenewal, which is voluntary. Either the county or the landowner can file that notice of nonrenewal. But again, as I said, it takes nine years for that to be entirely out, and the tax benefit drops accordingly during that time period. Or you can do a cancellation process as we're talking here.
A quicker, we can, we can make that determination to allow them out quick, more quickly?
Right, and then that's immediate. It's not, then there's not the nine-year time period to get out.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah, just by way of a clarification, but the initial contract is for a 20-year term, and then will count down to 10 years, which isn't evergreen unless there's a nonrenew. Is that correct? So the initial term is 20 years, and so.
And it adds.
And then, yeah, it always stays at, stays at, stays at 10. And so, in 2011, for example, this contract, they could have filed for nonrenewal then, you know, had that been the choice of the property owner at the time. But otherwise, it just stays at a 10-year term.
Yeah. And I think that with the notice of nonrenewal, I believe LeAnn Mueller confirmed that that would, the nine years would lapse in 20, February 20.
2029.
February 2029.
All right, very good. Thanks.
Okay, Chris, you're almost, you're almost, you're almost ready to start. We are, so we have a bit of a sub-agenda. We're going to hear from Chris Bohulie, who's going to give a staff presentation. And of course, the board may have questions during the presentation or following the presentation. Then we're going to proceed to hear from representatives of American River Ag. They all will have 15 minutes to present, and of course, there may be an exchange of questions and answers between board members and the presenter. We will also hear from those that are opposing this, this action today. My understanding is we're going to hear from Mr. Jackson Manassian. They too will have 15 minutes. And of course, the board will have an opportunity to ask questions at that point. Then we will hear from the public. Again, we have a number of folks that are registered to issue verbal comments telephonically this afternoon. And then we will have, American River Ag will be given an opportunity to follow up to the board in public comments. And then finally, the board will deliberate and take action. So with that, Chris?
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Serna, board members. Again, Chris Bohulie with the Office of Planning and Environmental Review. I'll be providing staff presentation for this item. The location for this item is 875 Alfalfa Plant Road in the Delta Community. The request before the board is a tentative cancellation of a portion of an existing Williamson Act contract on land leased by American River Ag. The Contract 01APO1 is from 2001, with origins from a prior 1971 contract, and covers multiple parcels over roughly 2,000 acres with multiple owners. However, the request before the board is cancellation of approximately 52 acres of that larger site. This slide contains the site graphics. On the right, the area in red shows the contracted Williamson Act parcels, which again, is a much larger area, most of which is not subject to the request before you. On the left, you can see the area that is subject to the cancellation. Of note, there is a small area on the southeast of the site that is not under Contract 01APO1, and therefore is not part of the request for cancellation. Currently, about 52 acres of the subject site is part of the contract, and there's a nine-acre area that I mentioned not under contract. As detailed in the staff report package and as County Council mentioned, the 2019 planning director's determination was made following the use permit request by American River Ag, and that determination was that their use of the site was inconsistent with the 2001 Williamson Act contract. As County Council mentioned, the applicant originally appealed that determination, would have gone to the Board of Zoning Appeals. However, that appeal was withdrawn, and instead submitted this request. So also, as County Council mentioned, the withdrawal of the appeal has caused the appeal period to lapse. Therefore, the planning director determination is in place. So the balance of my presentation will focus on the option that's before the board, which is the cancellation of the Williamson Act contract. The California Government Code, sections regulating the Williamson Act, allow a landowner to petition the board for cancellation. This is not done frequently, but it is a provision allowed. The code allows for the governing board to approve a cancellation if they make one of the two findings detailed on this slide. The county, however, has a higher bar for cancellation with Williamson Act contracts, and requires that the board make both findings, and also requires a four-fifth vote of the board to cancel a contract. So the findings that have to be made in order for the board to approve this cancellation is, one, that is consistent with the purposes of the Williamson, Williamson Act, and, two, that it is in the public interest. So taking the first finding, which is divided into five sub-findings in the government code, I will focus on this slide on, on sub-findings one through four. The first one is relatively easy. Cancellation is for land on which a notice of nonrenewal has been served. As we've mentioned earlier, the applicant has filed for nonrenewal. A copy of that notice is included in the report package, and therefore, that finding is clearly met. The second sub-finding is that cancellation is not likely to result in the removal of adjacent land from agricultural use. Planning staff has looked at this finding and do not believe that cancellation will result in surrounding lands being removed from agricultural use. Staff believes in general that agricultural processing is consistent with agricultural zones, sometimes subject to conditional use permits, and that the proposed alternative use of the site as an agricultural processing facility is not associated with typical urbanization, nor is it growth-inducing. Planning staff believes this sub-finding can also be made. The third sub-finding for cancellation is for an alternative use, which is consistent with the applicable provisions of the county's general plan. And again, planning staff believes that agricultural processing in the agricultural zones is either permitted or conditionally permitted, and consistent with the county's general plan. Number four, cancellation will not result in discontinuous patterns of urban development. Planning staff continues the same thought process here, that the alternative use is agricultural processing, which is supportive of agriculture. So cancellation is not going to result in discontinuous urban development. Finally, on the next slide, the fifth sub, I'm sorry?
Sorry, we have a question from Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. Chris, the word "processing" has come up a couple times in reading through these documents, and I, can you define what "processing" means? Because I think we think of, I think of processing as moving the plants and vegetables from whatever brought them in from the field into a truck to go to a plant somewhere in an industrial area to be processed.
Yeah.
So I think definition is important.
If you give me just one second, I'll grab my zoning code. We have a definition in our zoning code.
Hardly wait.
So our zoning code defines processing of agricultural products as the act of changing an agricultural crop subsequent to its harvest from its natural state to the initial stage of processing of that crop in order to prepare it for market or further processing at an off-site location. Examples of primary processing include nut hauling and shelling, bean cleaning, corn shelling and sorting, grape sorting and crushing, primary processing of fruits to juice, and initial storage of juice without fermentation, and cleaning and packaging of fruits.
Okay. So in this particular case, drying the sweet potatoes and cutting them into small pieces through a machine, that fits kind of the grape crushing scenario?
It's the staff's interpretation or determination that, that the primary processing and the initial processing fits that definition more clearly than other definitions in our zoning code. Because the final product is being made off-site from where this is happening.
It sounds like, you know, that's your interpretation, but it could be argued.
Sure.
Thank you.
Supervisor Natoli?
Yeah, just to follow along, Chris, since you're on that point, and I know that we, we're going to hear from some other folks, I'm trust, and we've seen in writing relative to this whole discussion about, about processing. But maybe just step back, and maybe Chris could help here too. What's provided for in the Act is to, and it goes back to those items that are produced on the property. Is that right? It allows a certain level of processing for those things that are produced on the property? For example, a packing shed, cold storage facility, because I know this issue's been raised, you know, in general.
So first of all, just to step back a second, this issue about whether produced is the same, requires that it be grown on the property relates back to LeAnn's interpret, planning director determination about whether it's compatible. So again, we've already, that door has been closed already, just to remind the board. But regardless, what our office has advised is that the Williamson Act contract requires that agricultural products, which are harvested, cured, processed, packaged, packed, shipped, and sold, be produced upon premises. And in this context, in my view, produced means grown based on the context of the contract and of the Williamson Act. But again, this is an issue that related back to the planning director's determination, which the board is not reviewing today.
But it's kind of hard to understand because it's in this findings section, the way Chris described it. It's not written there, but in his verbal comments?
Right. It's not, that is not, the word "processed" or "produced" is not one of the required findings to be made under the Williamson Act cancellation.
So the county has already decided that the applicant is not producing, the products are not on-site as required by our code?
Yeah. Our view is that the, in order to be compatible with Williamson Act contracts that the county has, and probably with the Williamson Act as a whole, you actually have to have products grown on-site. You can then produce them, process them, et cetera, but you can't take them in from outside and not grow anything and still be compatible with the contract as written.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's an important distinction, because again, as we'll probably hear from some speakers, even those who are, you know, no way tied to the immediate location or argument there, is that, you know, the implications, and I think the Agricultural Advisor Committee, you know, I took this up, and obviously, you know, ranchers and farmers that, you know, produce food and fiber for, you know, for the table, you know, utilize different methods, obviously depending upon the crop and, you know, and what's being produced or raised there. But I think it's, you know, it's important, because that was, to your point, Chris, there was, you know, the planning director's determination, and, you know, people can kind of parse that word, but I mean, I think that determination has been made by the planning director as it relates to this. But it doesn't negate, a lot of the other activities are going on in the county that are tied to agriculture, that are raised, produced, grown, and then processed, you know, in this county. Because, you know, I heard that in a roundabout way from one party that, you know, somehow this was threatened, depending upon the determination made here, is going to threaten agricultural operations up and down the county, and particularly those that are in the Williamson, you know, in contracted lands, a lot of those being in the Delta, but some being in the southeastern portion of the county as well, because a lot of your ranchers and farmers are in that area as well, and across the consumer spell. So clearly, this, we looked at this item, we look at the importation of materials that were, or the planning director did, and made a determination that it's, it's not consistent with the Act, and that, so that issue's not in question.
Right. And again, the findings that Chris has up on the screen, the board doesn't need to make a finding about that for purposes of cancellation.
Okay.
They just have to make the findings that are, the two findings with the five sub-findings. And none of them address what processing or production means.
Thanks.
Supervisor Frost?
It seemed like technically, though, in the Williams, in this specific Williamson Act contract, it stated that if they can process food that's brought from outside, if they're, if it's secondary to what they're already growing on that property. So if they had a crop, is this the same stipulation in all of our Williamson Act contracts?
This was a standard template. There may have been some changes over time.
Yeah, it's very similar to the contract language for other Williamson Act contracts.
Yeah.
Okay, so continuing on, finally, this slide, the fifth sub-finding, there is no proximate non-contracted land which is both available and suitable for alternative use, for the alternative use, or that the development of the contracted land will, would result in more contiguous patterns of urban development than non-development, I'm sorry, than development of proximate non-contracted land. The Williamson Act does provide guidance on what is proximate non-contracted land. Staff utilized the Williamson Act language in evaluating the criteria used by the applicant to search for alternative sites and agreed with their methodology. The applicant provided information on six sites, and planning identified an additional site for their consideration that was available and that met the criteria of being within the unincorporated county, between 40 and 100 acres in size, and a purchase price of less than $2 million. Planning staff analyzed those seven parcels detailed in the staff report package and concur that none of those sites are suitable for, for the alternative use.
Will you be telling us why they're not suitable?
Yeah, we can go into that. I wasn't planning on doing that as part of the presentation. It is in the staff report package, but I can briefly go through that. On page six of the report package, two of the parcels were identified as being currently under Williamson Act contracts, so those two would not be suitable. One parcel was located adjacent to smaller ag rez properties and is in a nonrenewal until 2027. So that was also identified as, as not suitable. One parcel is designated by the general plan as being a nature preserve. One has a conservation easement for seasonal wetlands and is remote from the highway with no infrastructure. One is in a resource conservation area adjacent to Rancho Murrieta, and then one is adjacent to, to a school. And so all of those sites were identified. And so all of those sites were identified as being non-suitable.
Well, I—I guess I have a couple of questions about that, then. There's one that was near a school, and one was too close to ag rez. And it seems like this property is very close to ag rez. It's in the middle of ag rez, in the mapping that I saw and from the residents we heard from. So how do you work that out?
Yeah, I think our analysis of the site was that it's mostly agricultural, this area, or the area where this subject site is. There are certainly homes in—in close proximity, but because it's more of an agricultural area as opposed to the one that was evaluated, which were smaller ag rez properties as opposed to agricultural properties. And for this one, there was not a school located in close proximity, that we agreed with the applicant's determination that those sites were not suitable as compared to this site.
They—they sound the same to me. I mean, as—as this one. I mean, if people are living or going to school nearby, why would you allow that kind of use?
Supervisor Nattoli.
Yeah, ju—just back to the site search, and I think, kind of picking up on a point that Susan's making, or Supervisor Peters. The—when you did the site search, they—they—they did the site search, you—planning staff suggested one of their sites that apparently was on the market. But when you're looking at warehouse space or processing facilities of—of different sorts, many of those are appropriately located in either light industrial, heavy industrial zones. Not always, we've talked about that just a moment ago, about primary processing in agricultural areas. But I'm curious, was there—there any interaction with staff about looking at areas that, again, are suitably zoned, where it would be permitted outright to do those activities, where it wouldn't require either compliance with the Williamson contract and/or a discretionary use permit, and still not, you know, still proximate, proximate? And if proximate is considered to be 30 miles or 35 miles away at Rancho, you know, up by Rancho Marietta, then I would think that your site search wouldn't necessarily have to be in county, although I don't know if that may be what the act stipulates, but if it—and if it does, fine. But then, how about areas where you have industrial zone land that allow for, you know, all the things that, you know, we're going to hear about from probably most parties today on the phone?
Yeah. So just to answer one—one of your questions, the act does not require that it be in the county, but it does have some guidance on—on proximate, and so we thought it was reasonable to look at the unincorporated county. As far as I know, they were not looking at sites that were industrially zoned. They were only looking at agriculturally zoned parcels, given the nature of their—their operation. So we—we were not—we did not require that they look at industrially zoned properties as part of that—as part of their record search.
But if you're looking at agricultural lands that may have easements on them, maybe proximate to other sensitive receptors, or to schools, or to ag rez, and I would grant that those are all potentially, you know, issues of compatibility. Again, back to my point, though, and if it didn't require in county, because again, I've—in one of the letters that we received, actually in support of sustaining the operation there, suggested that if the board took the—the—the action of—not canceling the contract, that they'd have to look to another county where supposedly there's more favorable consideration under Williamson contracted lands, and they—you know, I'll just say they specified Yolo and Butte in their—in their letter. Now, again, I have no idea what the, you know, the lay of the land is there as it relates to accommodating either under contracted lands or otherwise. But—but when you think about proximity to areas that have warehouses, that may or may not have, you know, you know, water and sewer, but certainly have the ability to accommodate processing in—in zones, again, where it's taking—it where it's—you know, and we reference the general plan here as a backup document on some of the—the staff recommendation. But where we—you know, you've already—you vetted that issue as it relates to processing, you know, of—of all sorts, not, you know, just agricultural products and manufacturing. So I'm curi—again, I—you still pique my curiosity why that wouldn't have been— and I know you put the $2 million limit on there, so I get it. If you're looking at, you know, 50 or 60 acres of industrial land, that's going to have a different valuation. But I think if you're looking at where that use could occur, then, again, I'm just, you know, say here that I think that, you know, it would include sites of that—of that type, and not just—type, not just agricultural land, you know, that, you know, may have other, you know, stipulations attached to them already, or have proximity issues. And not that you can't have issues in industrial areas where you may have distant residential, but, again, I just—but there was no further push on that. They submitted the six sites, you asked for a seventh, and then came to your conclusion based on that.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so the second overall finding in the Williamson Act is a two-parter. The second sub-finding is duplicative of a previous sub-finding, so I won't cover that one again. The first one is what I'll focus on, which is that other public concerns substantially outweigh the objectives of this chapter. Admittedly, this is the finding that is most open to interpretation. Staff—I'm sorry, I think I went ahead, missed a slide now. Staff looked to the objectives of the Williamson Act around protection of agricultural resources, preservation of open space, and promotion of efficient urban growth patterns to inform our analysis. The applicant argues that the cancellation advances the objectives because of the historic and more recent investment in the structures and the drying pad on the property. Therefore, if they wait for the non-renewal period to expire, the site would remain idle. Staff does not believe that it's likely that the improvements would be removed from the site and returned to the growing of crops. We also consulted with the county's ag advisory committee, who indicated an overall need to allow and consider allowing agricultural processing facilities. And so staff concludes that—the—that the support to the ag industry outweighs other objections, and we further recommend that the cancellation is in the public interest. We do believe, however, that the ability to consider ag processing on this site is appropriate, and operating concerns from the county and the public should be addressed as part of a subsequent use permit process.
Supervisor Peters.
Chris, I—I don't understand why you would talk about the ag advisory committee indicating a need for ag processing facilities and not mention that they voted seven to zero against approving this request.
Yeah, I—I will speak to that a little bit later during the presentation, but you're correct.
But it seems like they need to be closer together, because it's—a—you know, it's—it's separating the—the discussion from the result.
Sure, yes.
May I add something to Supervisor Nattoli's question, because LeAnn texted me, LeAnn Moffett, who's home, isolating. She said, "Primary processing of zoning code use tables has primary processing only in ag and AR-10 zone, not in industrial zones."
So you can—you cannot process fruits and vegetables in industrial zones?
I—I'm just relaying what she said.
No, I know, I get what that is.
It would explain why—
I find that very—
Industrial zone properties weren't considered.
Okay, I even find that curious now, so.
That is odd.
I don't know.
So how—excuse me, just—so what about canries and so forth?
As I say, what about the former Campbell's or Livy's sites and—
Yeah, tomatoes.
Is that packaging that's processed?
I'd consider that processed, right?
Yeah, they make tomato sauce.
Okay. Better tidbit to consider?
Or whatever it's worth or not worth.
Okay. Continuing on the theme on the ag advisory committee, they did consider this item earlier this year in January. Following the applicant's presentation and testimony in opposition of the request from seven members of the public, the committee indicated that the—that ag processing facilities should be compatible with Williamson Act contracts, and they plan to revisit with county staff compatible uses on Williamson Act contracted land. The committee recommended denial of the cancellation request, but generally supported the use of the site for primary agricultural processing. Admittedly, they were not presented with the use permit request, as it was not before them, and did not directly opine on the use permit matter.
So I have a question on this, Chris. Does that necessarily mean that it was the disposition opinion of the ag advisory committee that they agreed with this particular processing use? Or did they just leave it generic as—
Generic.
Okay, that's a—that's an important distinction as well.
Correct.
Okay. Supervisor Kennedy?
Yeah, this—it goes to what my first question was, and that's, you know, the—the inconsistency here. You have seven yes, zero no for cancellation from the AAC, and yet they're saying they support the use of the site for primary processing use. However, if we maintained the Williamson Act contract in place, they couldn't process their, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Ms. Chair?
Supervisor Nattoli.
Yeah, I—I'm going to refer to the letter that came from the Agricultural Advisory Committee, because I don't know if it makes it clear or not, but the motion by the committee, as stated in their letter January 16th, followed on their action of January 8th, said it was moved by the chair, by a committee member, and seconded by a committee member, to recommend denial of the Williamson Act cancellation request. Motion passed, as stated here, unanimous, voice vote, seven to zero. It also then goes to the next paragraph, says, "The Agricultural Advisory Committee interprets this as a use permit issue and considers agricultural processing as incompatible use for Williamson Act contracts. The Agricultural Advisory Committee plans to revisit compatible uses on Williamson Act contracted land." Period. They didn't make any determination about processing on this particular site. They may have talked about it. That's not reflected in the written communication, though, so I just—
That—that's correct. I—I thought that's what I mentioned in response to—to Supervisor Serna's question. It was not specific to this site.
It was to the general use.
Correct.
Yeah, but note to your point, I just—yeah, so to be clear, I think that was what they sent forward. Okay, thanks.
Supervisor Prost.
It—it seemed like in the letter from the Sacramento County Farm Bureau and a lot of the communications, that processing is a vital part of agriculture. And I have a question relating to the contract. We can determine to can—we can cancel the contract under certain conditions. Is there a way to amend the contract?
There is, and I think that's briefly mentioned in the staff report. That's not before the board today, but if that's something that the board wanted consideration of, you could send it back for that evaluation. My only caveat there is I am not sure that adding these sorts of uses to our Williamson Act contract would make the uses legal under the Williamson Act itself. We could change our contract and fix that issue. I still have serious concerns about whether you could be compatible with the statutory scheme without having crops grown onsite. That's something that I think would be a—a potential stumbling block for them. I'm not saying that can't be done. I think it's kind of an uphill argument.
I think the reason I bring it up is because processing, from what I understand, is a vital part of agriculture, and so—and there is concern around, you know, there are other farms in the area that are processing, who—who this—this could, you know, potentially —the decision here today could potentially impact, and also is it fair—
Only if they're not—only if they're not growing as well.
Right, right.
And I don't know how many—yeah, I don't think—I don't—I had inquired that, had asked that of planning, do—are we aware of any other situations like this? And I think we're not—we're not aware of any others similar. Doesn't mean they're not out there, but nothing I'm aware of.
But whether or not—but whether or not they're processing, it's subject to the permitting phase, so this is not, you know, what they're processing and how it impacts the surrounding areas is subject to the permitting part of it, not the Williamson Act part of it. Right? I mean, our decision today is not about what they're processing, or how it's impacting the neighbors. It's whether or not they qualify to exit the Williamson Act.
That's right.
And they have a right, as a property owner, to do—to request that.
That's right.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I just could, though, your point was a very important point, though. It goes back to producing on the site, and, you know, we're going to hear a lot about the history of this property over 40 or 50 years, but at one time, when it was all one of greater parcel, it may well have produced at least some of the product that was processed there. But the important point of distinction is, is that this, you know, from what you—from what you know and what been told, Krista, and I'm not aware, that thi—this is not going to have some broad impact on other producers and those that process in—in—in the delta, or in the county.
Not to my knowledge.
Yeah, not to my knowledge, okay. That's all—it's an important point, thanks to your question.
Okay, as stated, there are—or there is neighborhood opposition to both the use and the cancellation request. County departments and outside agencies, including the Air District, have received complaints about the use. Complaints have been related to mostly odors, emissions, and potential toxicity associated with processing of the sweet potatoes. I should note that the operations have been operating at a reduced level since early 2019, and therefore, the number of complaints have been recent—recently have been fairly few.
Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you. Sympathetic to all those issues, however, those aren't for us to consider here today, correct?
That's correct.
Right.
Yeah, and just to add on to that, perhaps all of us—I know I—I did—have an opportunity to speak to both the applicant and the opposition to this in advance of the—the meeting. These were phone calls at their requests, and I know that the opposition has expressed a lot of frustration and disagreement, quite frankly, and we'll hear from them later, about the substance of the staff report, because it did precisely did not focus on what they thought it should focus on, which is the odors, the nuisances. And that has everything to do with what I understand is, we're—we're really looking very narrowly at kind of the statutory framework of—the Williamson Act, the findings that need to be considered, and leaving it basically at—at those considerations, correct?
That's exactly right.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, so staff believes that the findings can be made to cancel the Williamson Act contract. If approved, staff recommends the cancellation fee of $17,120 not be waived. The applicant has requested a waiver of the fee, and the Williamson Act allows for specific criteria to be evaluated in making that determination. As detailed in the staff report, staff does not believe those findings can be made. Should the board approve the cancellation, the applicant could move forward with processing of the use permit, which is discretionary, and conditions could be applied to address nuisance concerns. The use permit process would be the appropriate venue for debating the merits of the use and concerns, including some of the concerns we've heard from the public. If the board denies the request to cancel the contract, the use must cease based on the previous Planning Director Determination. In closing, staff recommends the board may take the following actions. One, recognize the prior EIR as adequate and complete. Two, approve the cancellation of a portion of the Williamson Act contract, O1, APO1. And three, authorize the recordation of the tentative certificate of cancellation. That concludes staff's presentation on this matter, and I'll be available for further com—or questions.
Can I add one thing that Chris may have forgotten we were going to add? Technically, under the statutory scheme, it's a tentative cancellation, and it's tentative until they pay their fees, and then there's a certificate that's filed. So it's technically called tentative, but—but this is really the merits of it. Then there's just a procedural step to follow if—if the board does make this finding or approves this.
Okay, very good. I know that Supervisor Nattoli wants to speak or ask questions here, but I have one, before we get to him, one kind of overarching question. I guess it's mostly for Krista. And that's just kind of to step back and take a look at the— And that's just kind of to step back and take a look at the, kind of the trajectory of what the proponents are doing here. Because the way I look at their calculus is that it's a calculated risk for what they're doing. In other words, let's say it is the will of this board to agree with the staff recommendation and cancel the Williamson Act contract on that portion of property that we're being asked to consider. That does not necessarily mean that they are given the ability to continue their use. They would have to subsequently pursue the use permit, like we mentioned at the outset of the staff presentation. However, not, without that guarantee, they will have lost the benefit, the tax benefit of that portion of the property that would have otherwise been in Williamson Act, correct? So this is a bit of a calculated risk on their part, is it not?
I think that's fair, yes.
Supervisor Intoli?
Just a question that kind of relates to the staff analysis, and you said that your recommendation involved us taking action on some environmental certification. But the reliance here, again, I think there was a bit of surprise by some folks when we got 1,000 pages of the general plan, final environmental document, as being the backdrop for the SEQA analysis. And I, you know, you summarized that in your staff report about the various elements and consistency with agriculture. But I guess I am curious, because there was no individual or precise analysis of beyond staff looking at the various points that have to, and findings that would have to be made, and then, you know, your conclusion and ultimately your recommendation on that. So I guess my question is, is how is it you can rely on a document that's eight years old, that's inclusive of, you know, everything that goes on, relative land use in the incorporated area of the county, and then say that's sufficient in that you asked this board if we were to take the action in the affirmative to certify that that's the basis upon which we acted? I, again, I just, I'll just say, not having the legal background nor the secret background, I find that a bit of a stretch. And maybe somebody can enlighten me on that.
In staff's consultation with our environmental coordinator, the Williamson Act cancellation is subject to SEQA. Typically, Williamson Act contracts are not subject to SEQA. We reviewed it. We determined that the cancellation would allow for uses that are either permitted or conditionally permitted in the agricultural zones, and determined that because of that, the general plan would be, the environmental document analyzed those types of uses in agricultural zones, and that any subsequent analysis with a specific conditionally permitted project would be analyzed at that time. So in response to your question, we did not look at the specific use because that's, again, not what we are bringing forward at this time, but that will be analyzed as part of a use permit request should we get to that point.
It kind of goes, and I appreciate your explanation, Chris, and again, that was your conclusion, obviously, that's embodied in what you bring to us. But you said early on, it doesn't happen very often. Well, cancellation requests are pretty rare, that they would come to this board, but appropriately so if that's what people were choosing to do. And secondly, I think the, you know, it's even rarer that if they get here, that they get granted unless there are certain circumstances. Obviously, you've tried to address that in the staff report or have addressed at least to your satisfaction. But, you know, I think the fact that the cancellation is here before us, and I can't recall the last time we saw one. We've seen some rescissions and modifications that relate to lands being added or tweaked when they took a house out or something like that. But, you know, I can't, you know, can't recall the last time we saw one. It's been a long time. And non-manual is the route that people are typically given guidance on. And so I guess I just want to take it back to my question about SEQA, though. So, you know, as rare as we see a cancellation request, understanding you use the backdrop of the general plan and in the agricultural policies, but there are some other conclusions that you arrive at, or either you agree with the applicant or concur with them, or you believe they've been met, that, you know, could have offset the impacts depending upon how they were interpreted. You've interpreted it in a certain way. But that, there was no environmental analysis behind that. And it pertains to the cancellation. I'm not talking about, you know, all the other issues that, you know, we're going to, we're going to hear about in arguments why or why not. But, and I don't know, maybe, Chris, maybe you can, I mean, is there, because, again, we go back to a 1,000-page document that was certified by the board eight years ago. And granted, you know, there is that connectivity, but we rely on that to be the backdrop for us being asked to take an action of canceling a contract or not. And I guess, I kind of, something's lost in that translation, at least in my view. And it's not because of the volume and information or whatever, but again, I don't want to parse too deeply on SEQA because it's not an area I have expertise in. But it seemed to me that a cancellation request would at least, and so if your finding was that you could support this, and, you know, you say that there's, I don't know, is it exempt, or it's mitigated decoration, or is it negative? I mean, I don't know, but all we have is this reference, and we're going to, we're going to be asked to certify against a document that is very broad, very inclusive, and has, you know, many different aspects to it. So, again, I just, I put it out there because, again, as I pondered what being asked of us today, and we don't see this very often, and it is rare, and there are interpreted and argued facts and information, and yet we don't have an environment document that really speaks to a number of those issues, specifically those of the cancellations. I'll leave it at that. I don't, maybe counsel doesn't want to weigh in at this point, and I appreciate the explanation by Chris, but I'm not so sure I'm 100% agreement about that. Thanks.
Supervisor Frost?
Counsel, you mentioned that this is a tentative cancellation, and my question goes to the fact that if they cancel this, they still may not be able to move forward with their processing plant because it's all subject to further approvals, different approvals. And so, is there a way to explore that, to see if there's a way that they can work it out? They want to be, they've stated they want to be good neighbors. Can you do a tentative cancellation and explore the other part of it before finalizing the cancellation of the Williamson Act?
Under this, it's really tentative more procedurally is how I read the statute. It says that upon tentative approval of a petition, the clerk of the board records the certificate of tentative cancellation, and conditions to be satisfied shall include payment in full of the amount of fee computed. So I think all we're asking for is that the fee be paid, and then it will become final.
So is there a way for, though, is there another path besides canceling the Williamson Act to work out these issues? It seems like it was a complaint process that brought this forward. I'm just asking. Is this the only path?
No. Code enforcement is another path that was being...
No, they needed, they needed a zoning, they needed a license, right? They need a permit.
Yeah, so planning has made a determination that the use right now is not permitted, and so they need to get a use permit in order to legally operate as they are now. So if this Williamson Act contract remains in effect, then we're going to have, and they can, and they continue operations, then you could end up with a continuing, restarting of the code enforcement issue. I think that code enforcement, typical on this as in other projects, when you have a use permit that's been filed to legalize a non-conforming or a non-permitted use, that we hold off and give them time to come in compliance. But once this process is done, then that could be restarted.
Supervisor Tony?
Yeah, just one, one other question, Mr. Chair, for, for Chris. And it goes back, and we take this up, I trust, as we get into deliberations, but I want to be understanding of the recommendation that, and staff's belief that the finding of public interest can be made. And in your report on page nine, you said you evaluate the cancellation, the alternate use of, affect the objectives, and whether there's a public concern outweighing these objectives. You limit your discussion there on considerations and rationale. Talk about opposition, and you say that, that the cancellation will not, if one were to oppose cancellation, at least argument, you put the cancellation would not facilitate infrastructure or public use that directly benefits the public, such as housing, roads, utilities, or schools. And the cancellation would facilitate a private use that has no direct public interest. Therefore, the cancellation could be found not in the public interest. And then you go on, obviously, in support of the cancellation, and ultimately where you come down, you talk about, you know, vacant buildings, sitting idle, and potential loss of some jobs, again, not inconsequential, but that's, that's what you talk about. But then if we're talking about public interest, is the public interest, I mean, it's a short paragraph that talks about, you know, roads, schools, housing, and utilities. And if we're, and if the point here is we're talking about cancellation, there, you know, there is an immediate public around the facility. It has had some impacts. And I guess if that's not, it hasn't been weighed in your recommendation in your response to other supervisors, you can, this kind of this technical approach. But I guess I'm curious as to, in the consideration of opposition to cancellation, is this the only discussion that you're putting forth that would say, otherwise, you know, makes sense to cancel? I mean, again, I, I guess I find a little devoid of any more information or discussion about that, irrespective of where you came down on your recommendation. So, Chris, maybe you can, again, enlighten.
Sure. You know, certainly, I think we've acknowledged, and as, as part of the public record, there's a significant body of concern about this specific use. As we put together our report package and analysis, it was looking at it from a context of the removal of the site from the contract and the public benefits of the contracted land and the concerns of removing contracted land and not evaluating use-specific concerns. Again, I think staff's approach was that those would be appropriately analyzed and addressed as part of a use permit process if we get to that point, and that this was really at a kind of higher level of addressing removal of contracted land from this, from this area.
So let me just take one more moment here on this, though. But the contract, again, that's entered into by the landowner, and whether it's the current landowner or a previous one, obviously, it passes through. It isn't just that, it's a contract. And again, I'm not skilled in contract law, but it does limit certain uses. And for that, either preservation of and promotion of agricultural pursuits or open space, there's a tax benefit that accrues. But, you know, the, if that contract is sustained and kept in place, you're not telling the landowner that you can't do the agricultural, anything that's permitted under the contract is still permitted. It's been permitted, remains permitted. It's what they choose to do and have chosen to invest in over time. But, you know, as far as the public interest being served, the public interest was served when that contract was entered into. I mean, that's a basis for the, for the legislation, if I understand it correctly, going back, you know, 50-plus years ago. And, you know, again, you know, people may not like the conditions because they want, either there's been a changed use, there's a changed approach. But, but the idea is, is that you enter into it willingly, and now they're here before asking to cancel it because of the incompatibility with, you know, what, what we, I think, have accurately, you know, portrayed under the planning director's decision. But I still want to bring back to that point because, again, we're not telling you can't use it for agricultural purposes, or even for things that were grown on the site. Now, granted, it may be a smaller site than the, what it was previously, 2,000 acres or hundreds of acres. But nonetheless, they're still under, under contract, able to do all those things. Now, can they put those facilities to the same use that they currently have them in? That's part of the point here, but they're seeking to cancel that because that's what they want to do versus what they can do, could do, and would be able to do if the contract stood.
Mm-hmm.
Is that accurate?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Supervisor Frost?
If, if this property owner were to, like, rent out to other farmers that grew this crop on his land, how much land, is there a limit to the amount of land you have to be farming in order to have a secondary processing, to process what's being grown, and a secondary processing that's, of goods that are brought in?
I am not...
I'm not aware of a numerical, it's not in the statute.
It's not spelled out how much.
Correct.
So it's something or nothing that divides the opportunity of processing.
Right, I don't know.
I think that was ultimately what the planning director determination was.
Right, whether it's enough. I don't know.
But clearly, on this site, nothing else is being grown, nothing is being grown on the site. It's only the, the processing of this.
If this was, if this was complaint-driven, I wonder how many others in the agriculture community are processing something that's not being grown on site? Or, I mean, I think that's the concern of the Farm Bureau.
Correct.
Yeah, that this could set a precedent. Okay, thank you.
Okay. If there's no further questions for staff, as I mentioned at the outset of the item, we are going to now hear from American River Ag, and I'm not sure who is going to be presenting, and they do have a PowerPoint. I assume it's Mr. Rasmussen. So if we could get the representative on the, on the line to guide the presentation.
I'm here, Mr. Serna.
Thank you. You're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members. I'm Eric Rasmussen. I'm representing the American River Ag before you today. Purpose I'm going to serve here is I'm going to introduce the people who will get into some specifics and details for you. Andrea Materazzo with Pioneer Law Group, and John Convoy, who's the Director of Operations for ARA. Again, they'll provide you with specifics and details. But before I turn it over to them, I just want to introduce the issue briefly and explain to you, at least from our point of view, how we got here and what our intent is. Since they've all come to our attention, we've worked to conform with all county requirements. We've dealt with multiple agencies throughout the county and within the state. One of the requirements that we ran into was the need to apply for a conditional use permit. So we did. And we were told, as we're entering into that process, that our application couldn't go forward because of, because our nearly 50-year-old Williamson Act contract had been reinterpreted to say that ag processing, as we were doing, isn't a compatible use. So we have really no question or no choice but to request cancellation. So remember, all of this really was just done to get to the point where we could apply for a conditional use permit, but during that process, all of the complaints and concerns you'll hear today would be discussed and addressed. I'll note that in your agenda packet, you have a complaint log from the Air District showing that while complaints continue to be made, each one is investigated on-site by Air District personnel, and there has not been one confirmed complaint of odor or anything else since May 2nd of 2019, showing that, you know, our efforts to mitigate and deal with the neighbors have been real-time important and successful. Since the contract was entered to in 1971, the use never, ever changed. The contract was even renewed in 2001, still no change, still a processing plan. In your packet, you have copies of a dozen or so permits that required onsite visits from county personnel, and likely they all required, or some of them required, planning review. Why all of a sudden now are we being reinterpreted? I don't understand. They've, the county has known all along what's been going on out there. Even our address, frankly, Mr. Chair, even our address makes it clear what goes on on our site. Our address is on Alfalfa Plant Road. It was an alfalfa plant. They made pellets from alfalfa that they brought in from offsite. This is no change from that. For much of its life prior to ARA's purchase, the site was used, again, as a pellet manufacturing plant with the hay being trucked in from offsite.
Excuse me, Eric, this is the clerk. Please remember to tell me when to move to the next page. Are you still on page one or two?
No, no, I'm just introducing, no page.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Okay, and also, I'm going to, I've stopped the clock, I've stopped the clock, Mr. Rasmussen, but please be aware that you have... but please be aware that you have 15 minutes and the clock is running. So you're currently at about 13 minutes.
We have no affirmative desire to cancel the Williamson Act contract, but rather just want a decision from this body that allows us to continue on in the process, to apply for a CUP where all of these issues will be discussed. So we would ask specifically that you grant our request for cancellation, or you can direct staff as to the long time intent that Williamson Act terms include ag processing, or I believe one of the options you're given by staff is that you can modify today ARA's contract to make that clear, that processing is allowed under the Williamson Act. So with that, let me turn it over to Andrea Matarazzo with Pioneer Law Group to get into some of the specifics. And if you would, if you have any questions before that of me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. This is Andrea Matarazzo with Pioneer Law Group on behalf of American River Ag. I do have the PowerPoint, so I'd like to be able to refer to that information. As you also know, we've submitted quite a bit of material in your packet. We have some detailed explanations of how this situation arose, why we are here today, and what it is that we're asking for. The staff report that you have in front of you does present two potential pathways to move forward and allow American River Ag to process the use permit, and that's really what we want to focus on. We did, in our materials, explain that we think that the board could interpret the contract as it stands today to allow processing on the site as a compatible use. We think that's a legitimate approach. But we also agree with staff that there are two more direct pathways. You could cancel the contract, or you could direct staff to bring a proposal to modify the terms of your Williamson Act contract and ordinance in order to make it more clear that processing is a primary ag use. And two points that were raised in the earlier discussion, Supervisor Frost asked the question, I believe, whether the cancellation could be made tentatively pending the outcome or the proceeding of the conditional use permit process. Although that's not what the statute necessarily prescribes, I think it's something that could be possible. The board, if it preferred not to outright cancel the contract, could take a tentative approach, acknowledging that we need a pathway to go forward with the conditional use permitting process where a lot of the concerns that have been raised would be addressed, including CEQA. The board could make that decision tentatively, and we could go forward knowing that we have a burden in terms of satisfying the requirements of a use permit process. So I think that is a legitimate option. And thank you Supervisor Frost for mentioning that. I also would like to clarify something that was raised in County Council's comments about the approach to modify the county's approach to Williamson Act contracts and whether you could include ag processing as a primary or compatible use. And in our investigation of this issue, and I know that the Ag Committee was going to do its own research, but in our investigation, we confirmed that other very conservative agricultural counties like Yolo, Butte, and San Joaquin, three of the most conservative agricultural counties in the state, all provide for primary ag use being, excuse me, ag processing being a primary ag use. It's allowed as a right on ag properties in Yolo County. Similar language in the ordinances in San Joaquin and also in Butte. So I don't think that there's a statutory obstacle to modifying or amending those terms. I think others, other counties have done it. Those are not lightweight counties in terms of agricultural preservation. They are very strong in that, in that sense. So I think that there's a model there as well that we could use to take that pathway toward modification. So there are two very clear paths that we think are in front of you today and could make a lot of sense. I also wanted to answer a question that was raised by Supervisor Peters in terms of neighbors. The closest resident to this facility is a mile away. So just, excuse me, I'm sorry, I misspoke. It's half a mile. Still a very substantial distance, and so wanted to make sure that that was clear on the record, that there are not adjacent residents within half a mile of this facility. Supervisor Nativi asked whether industrial sites could or should have been investigated. There were only three criteria that we applied to searching for proximate sites. We searched far and wide for proximate sites. We only used three limitations: acreage, non-contracted, meaning they aren't already under a Williamson Act contract, because that would present the same problem we have now, and under $2 million for purchase price. So if there had been an industrial site that was available that satisfied those very three, the three very broad criteria, we would have looked at it. So to answer your question, yes, we did consider industrial sites, there just aren't any. So with that, I would like to begin the PowerPoint presentation.
Okay, you have about seven and a half minutes.
Okay, I can roll through it. So as has been pointed out by Eric and others, this has, this use has been in place on the site for 40 years plus. The board entered the original contract in 1971. At that time, the predecessors to ARA processed alfalfa into pellets, then hay was dried and processed into bales, and now we process sweet potatoes and other similar crops, break them into chips, and solar dry them on a dry pad. There's no dehydrator, there's, this is not a factory. It's a chipping and drying operation of sweet potatoes and other types of produce that are not suitable for sale on the grocery store. They're food-grade, high-quality vegetables that are dried in the sun. That contract initially was entered in 1971 and renewed in 2001. And in 2001, the property had already become separated from the larger holdings, and the board renewed the contract knowing that there was nothing produced on the site, even though the processing facility continued to be in operation. So if there was some conflict or compatibility, incompatibility that should have been addressed through the Williamson Act, 2001 was the time to do it. Next slide, please. On this slide, you should see a photograph, a Google Earth image from May 2002, that shows the condition of the site at the time that the property was contracted, or the contract was renewed in 2001. Virtually the same conditions, 10 buildings and a drying pad since 2001. The alfalfa processing involved trucks of product from California and other parts of the western United States that was sold regionally and exported to places like Japan. And it was at a volume that there's just absolutely no way that the primary source of those, of the product was the site or neighboring properties. It was coming from all over, being processed at the facility, and none was grown on the site. You can see that it's in the same configuration now as it was then, where there's just no room to grow anything. ARA processes crops from the Delta. It's relied upon by Sacramento County farmers and others. There's been some commentary that thought that these crops don't even come from the Delta area. They absolutely do. You have letters in your record from farmers in the community expressing that fact. And so if you look at the next slide, please, the Google Earth image from February 2020, it actually has a more agricultural character today than it did in 2001. There's still the same 10 buildings and drying pad. It's never been suitable for growing crops. It never has been in the history of the contract. So the planning director's interpretation would mean that growing a crop on the site is the only way for American River Ag to comply with the contract. If you look at the site, that's just not possible. So to Supervisor Nativi's comment that they could do all of the other types of uses under the contract, this is, this is the parcel. What other uses of an agricultural nature could we do there? It's really, it's a difficult situation, we recognize that, but this is not a condition that has changed. And that's, that's something that these photographs show very clearly, that at the time the board entered the contract, it was in exactly the same condition and circumstance as it is today. And that goes to your point Supervisor Nativi about CEQA, because there is, CEQA is concerned with physical changes in the environment, and there are none associated with canceling or modifying the Williamson Act contract. There could be associated in, with the use permit process, and that is, all we're asking to do is be able to move forward through that process. Next slide, please. This is where we really kind of summarize our requests. We're asking that you either approve staff's recommendation and cancel the Williamson Act contract, which again, as Supervisor Frost pointed out, could be a tentative cancellation, or follow the Ag Committee recommendation and recognize this as a compatible or primary ag use. Now, it's understood that County Council doesn't believe you have the ability to make that interpretation today, but we do believe that you could modify the language to make that, that kind of an interpretation in the future, and that would be another path forward. In the interest of time, I'm going to let John Convoy from American River Ag give his presentation, and then if there's any time left or if there are questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So this is John, and thank you to the board for having us here today. I'll be very brief with my comments. I just wanted to kind of talk through this, but, you know, back in 2011, when we acquired this facility, it was vacant, rundown, ramped it with weeds, there was homeless people on the property, there was drugs out there. One of the buildings was used for a chop shop for stolen cars. We've taken that property. It is a very nice property. I know just about the whole Board of Supervisors has been out to see that site over the last three, five years. These complaints from the neighbors started in 2017. Before 2017, the site had no complaints. You know, we actually met with the neighbors in early 2017, I believe it was May, met with the neighbors. Ken Ambrose was there, Rusty Araez was there. We met at the Brannick's house and tried to work on solutions and tried to figure out what the issues were. We invited everybody to the site, nobody came. But due to those complaints, we started working with the Air Board. They said that we required a permit, even though back in 2011, they said we did not need a permit. But we worked with the Air Board. We spent a ton of money revamping the site, doing new things, trying to reduce odors, working on emissions, anything that they said, we've done and spent a bunch of money doing that. We've received complaints, anonymous complaints, to the Water Board that said that we're dumping chemicals in the canals. We don't use chemicals in our process, it's very simple. Potatoes come in, they're whole. We chop them, we dry them, that's it. But we work with the Water Board now, we have a water permit. We had anonymous complaints that were sent into the EPA. They said we're, have toxic stuff and it's a danger to the neighbors. Dr. Casari from ZAC County Public Health has been to our site a number of times. She came out and she said, "There's no danger here, something else is going on." There are anonymous complaints to OSHA. OSHA came out to our site and did a full inspection. The anonymous complaint said that we're harming our people. OSHA came out, did the full inspection, we gave them all of our information, all of our training. They said, "You guys are doing a great job." So, you know, through all kinds of costly things that we've done with the Air Board to show that this is scientific testing by the person who developed the EPA methods, we have shown that we don't have toxins coming from sweet potatoes. We have shown that the emissions are actually very low. We have a cornfield next to us. The emissions from the cornfield are higher than from our site. So the emissions are very low. We have very costly expenses on very many areas. One of them is odor. We have not had an odor complaint in over a year certified by SMA QMD, the Air Board.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, this is Chair Serna. Your 15 minutes have expired. I'm willing to give you two minutes so you can wrap up, but I'm going to be giving equal time to the opposition, so they'll be given a total of 17 minutes. So you have two minutes.
Sounds good. So the only thing that's holding us back right now from processing, because we've already done a lot of work through this whole process of the dangers and things that we've put to bed with the science, is just this use permit. We still have to go through all these other things and concerns that the neighbors have. So we've been operating on this site in the same manner for the last 40-plus years. The bottom line is, the county needs ag processing. We need to have a place for our farmers to take stuff. We provide good jobs to the county when at a time right now, when there's a lot of limited jobs out there and people are out searching, we're looking to shut this down for some reason, I don't know why. But the decision also creates a precedent, and ag businesses that are also processing for other people's crops or things on their site are at risk as well. So, you know, that's all I have to say here, and I want to wrap that up.
Mr. Chairman, Eric Rasmussen, again, thanks for that extra two minutes. We're watching on the video feed, and there's about a two-minute delay. Maybe we could just chalk it up to that. Anyway, that's it. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Great, thank you. I think we do have some questions here. We'll start with Supervisor Frost.
My question is for John. What will you do if you cancel the Williamson Act contract and you're not able to get an acceptable use permit?
We're pretty confident that we can get a use permit. I mean, there's a number of things. We've already done most of the work for that conditional use permit. I just don't see anything holding us up here, other than the politics.
Thank you.
Supervisor Nativi.
My question is for staff. Chris, if I could, just to the previous question relative to the use permit, I know it was addressed in the staff report, but this issue was discussed some months ago, even when the appeal was before the Board of Zoning Appeals, about what would happen in the event that the use permit, when they first filed it, where it went. Because if I recall, and maybe you can clarify this, that use permit, under at least the process that was anticipated in the zoning code, would, would not come back to this board. Now, there is an appeal process under the current structure with the CPACs or Delta, CMAC, that in the event that, you know, certain things were triggered, could get here, but it would go to the zoning administrator and then to Planning Commission.
That's correct. So if I can just lay that out real quickly. It is a use permit to the zoning administrator. Under our current construct in the zoning code, if the request is recommended for denial by the CPACs, in this case, the Delta CMAC, it would automatically bump to the Planning Commission with an ability to be appealed to the Board of Supervisors.
Okay, but unless there was that appeal, otherwise it wouldn't, it wouldn't come to us, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other questions for the proponents and/or staff? Seeing none, we will move on to the opposition. And my understanding is that we're going to hear from Ted, Mr. Ted Harris?
Yes, Mr. Ted Harris, and I'm going to bring him on the line now.
Okay. And the opposition will have 17 minutes. Doesn't mean you have to use all 17, just means you have 17.
Mr. Harris, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, thank you.
You're on.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Supervisors. This is Ted Harris. I lead the Environmental Land Use Practice at California Strategies, a longtime resident of Sacramento County. Thank you for the opportunity today to provide input on the request to cancel the contract at Alfalfa Plant Road on behalf of the Delta Agricultural Community. We appreciate your consideration today to support local community, support local ag operations, and adjacent local workers who suffered the last nine years, how many times, in unbearable, in untable conditions. We're very aware that today's consideration is pertaining to the Williamson Contract. I want to stay focused on that. Just to quickly address a few items that were mentioned previously, I do think the important date to look at is 2011, not 2001. And then just stepping in that big picture, I think it's important to keep in mind that the overarching goal and objective of the Williamson Act is to preserve ag uses, to serve local ag uses, and to only consume ag land to directly serve local and adjacent ag economy and preserve open space. I think when you look through that lens, and as others, just that big picture, it's very clear in this case, once you carefully go through and look at the portable findings, whether for public interest or for four of the five criteria, that those findings are not supportable today. And it does pertain back to the use. So it's very important to note that Alfalfa Plant Road has an important background, that it was serving alfalfa from the Delta, alfalfa from the region which has a sweet smell, not the putrid smell that goes far, far beyond half a mile and has made it unbearable for legitimate local ag workers to farm in Sacramento County and even outside the county. So as we walk through this, I just want to, you know, give a little bit of background, so bear with me on some of the technical pieces. But in 2011, when the area was taken control by current operators, it was under the existing Williamson Act contract with existing obligations to protect primag, to protect open space, and there's an explicit provision in the general plan to protect farmland. I think it's very important to note that 100% of the products coming into the facility are from far, far outside the region, and it's very different than locally grown alfalfa. Bringing those rotten potatoes from Livingston and from 112 away, or soybeans from the Midwest, is an industrial use, and there's absolutely no reason- from the Midwest, is an industrial use, and there's absolutely no reason under the Act that that would need to be located on primag land and push demand for processing, which we totally support legitimate processing that supports local jobs and actual production of asparagus, bears, you name it. And so, in light of that, I think it's very important that although we understand it's not the use today, it's extremely important to recognize the pattern of disregard for permitting, the fact that all of the current activities run without a conditional use permit, without an air permit, without a water permit, and there's been a disadvantage, a benefit, a disadvantage, all the law-abiding legitimate operators in the actual ag community. As you likely have seen, the ag community is very supportive of processing of local products and definitely wants to make sure that it is compatible with the Williamson Act.
Mr. Harris, I'm going to interrupt for a second.
You're formally running the program for the state.
Ted, Ted, Ted.
Mr. Harris?
Is a compatible use with the Act itself.
Yeah, I need to interrupt you for a second. We have a question from one of our supervisors. I'm going to stop your clock. Supervisor Kennedy.
Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Harris, if I could ask you to, as much as possible, direct your comments specifically toward why the county should or should not cancel the Williamson Act contract, rather than the land uses and the problems that are underlying those uses. I think we're all aware of that, but what's before us today, and where I need help, is determining whether or not this is, the terms have been met to, and the findings have been consistent, to cancel a Williamson contract, not so much that there, I think that, you know, there's probably pretty significant agreement that should this use continue, it would have to be conditioned in a way that would not impact neighbors to the degree that we're hearing it has.
Right.
But that's why I want to, I want to know from you, you know, why should we or should we not cancel the Williamson? Why are the findings that staff found inconsistent, in your mind, with the Williamson Act?
Thank you. Thank you. And I will fast-forward to that section. So, of the five criteria, the first one has been met, and that's you have to file for non-renewal. And so, we've met one of five criteria. The second, the second criteria is that cancellation requires, that the cancellation not remove adjacent land from ag use. And while it's pertinent that none of these materials come locally, that because of the demand for land and because of, you know, basic land use economics, if you're consuming 50 acres for an industrial use processing, something from hundreds of miles away, you're precluding that land from processing local things like asparagus, bears. And so, you're absolutely causing a demand for agricultural primag land, 14 acres of which have been paved over, and it's also, to be very clear, there's been a huge intensity of use, and the only reason that the complaints have gone down is that it's at 80% reduction level per the requirement of AKMD, because the emissions were five times over what's allowed by AKMD without a permit. And that's a very important distinction from what was said earlier. But number one, so the number two criterion is clearly not met. It's clearly not met because it does push demand to adjacent areas that could be preserved for open space or could be preserved for other use that need to process legitimate local Delta and Sacramento County products. Third criteria is the cancellation must be for alternative use that's consistent with the local provisions of the general plan. Again, allowing fully unpermitted 14 acres of primag land to be paved over with no board approval, no Water Boards and others, is definitely contrary to the overarching policy of preserving farmland, which is one of the core general plan provisions for the county. And by allowing an industrial use that could be cited anywhere really appropriately for the Williamson Act, should be cited close to the source of origin, hundreds of miles away. That provision also, it is not consistent to pave over 14 acres of ag land. It's not consistent to use primag land to process products, inputs from the Midwest or from Livingston or beyond. And so, that clearly is not met. Number four, you know, the cancellation must result, does not result in a discontinuous pattern of urban development. Well, the existing site that was expanded and intensified, additional surface laid by the current applicative no permits, is absolutely a discontinuous use. The previous use for processing alfalfa, absolutely appropriate, naturally consistent with the Williamson Act, the existing and proposed use of that land led to an industrial use being cited directly on primag land, which dramatically expanded intensive use and absolutely pushes demand elsewhere in the county. And I would say more than 50 acres, because it also renders legitimate local ag operations oftentimes unbearable when they're at normal levels of production, not the ramp-down 80% reduction required by the AKMD. And then, the final one is that the county also must find that no proximate non-contracted land is available for suitable use for that development, or that contracted land would provide a more contiguous pattern of development. So, it's touched on that it does not support a contiguous use. In fact, it's leapfrog industrial sprawl, number one. And on the second, I think it's very important to note that the search that went on, the intent, big picture of the Williamson Act, is to support local products. You're not supposed to ship rotten potatoes from hundreds of miles away into Sacramento County, where you get all the bad and very little of the good. That is absolutely not the intent. Again, Brian Leahy, we're on the program, we'll expand on that. But this finding is far from being supportable because of supporting leapfrog industrial activity of inputs that are from hundreds of miles away and no way needs to be on our primag land and affecting our open space and not supporting our local jobs. Again, if we were local supporting, you'd have local growers that need that process, in which we all support, and especially right now are sympathetic for the needs of those jobs. So, that's one of five other requirements, and very directly why the findings would be unsupportable to make the finding today. But the most important one is, unlike most cases, we have an "and" in the public interest. And that's where you can't devoid the public interest. And to mention schools and other things, that's absolutely nothing to do with what's before you. That was a very odd part of the staff report. What does matter is fundamentally, is the cancellation in the public's interest. If you look at all the bad acting that occurred over the last nine years, all of the harm that was going to legitimate ag workers in the community, if you look at the fact it's an industrial use that's cited on primag land, it could be in West SAC, it could be in Oakland, it could be anywhere, but it sure shouldn't be sitting in our county on primag land when the inputs are coming from the Midwest or from Livingston. So, if you step back, I think that one is unbelievably difficult to make the case that continuing a bad actor, who is definitely not to be a good neighbor, and although Pocni's and neighbors ultimately proved to on bad actions, in no way care it up on the be kind words, that there's very, very little chance that people are going to change behavior and that you're going to see improvement to that site. So, I think it's very important that this site focuses on those tenants, but those tenants need a thoughtful, supportable, reasonable analysis that looks at the actual facts, the actual conditions, and what will likely occur on the site, which would very much harm the public interest. So, in light of that, you know, if you just step back, you look at the, you know, the patterns of violation, if you look at the history of paving over primag land, which is a direct conflict with the general plan tradition, and the fact that it's not serving local agriculture uses whatsoever. In light of all those, it would be extremely difficult to make supportable findings today to cancel. On behalf of the Delta farmers who've been subjected to lots of local impacts, we support today that we support primag land, we support open space and processing of locally serving processing, and respectfully vote a no vote today. I would ask for questions. Again, Brian Leahy ran the Williamson Act program, will be on the line as well.
Okay. Is anyone else with your party going to be presenting or speaking?
There are a number of folks, I know that, you know, in general, but I was the only organized speaker for our side, so. Again, Brian Leahy will be speaking, but he can come on either now or as appropriate in the queue.
Okay. It sounds like then this is the board's opportunity to ask questions of Mr. Harris. Supervisor Nattoli.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I know that Brian Leahy submitted a letter today, and a number of the points that Mr. Harris covered in his presentation were included there, but I guess if they're so inclined, I'd be interested to hear from Mr. Leahy. I think I heard he was on the phone. If there was anything that he, because if I read his letter of today, it does elaborate on some of the points Mr. Harris put forth, but it's pretty emphatic as well. So, I just, again, Mr. Chair, through the chair, if, on the presenters, if they want Mr. Leahy to speak to any of the things that were conclusions, again, are consistent with Mr. Harris, but I think he highlighted a few areas. I'd be curious to at least hear from him, and apparently has some experience in his previous work in this area.
Okay. Mr. Leahy, are you available to address the board?
I don't have anyone else.
Oh, I thought he said he was on the line. I'm sorry. I thought he said.
No, he's the only one for the organized speaker that was called in advance. I didn't have any request from anyone else to be called in advance. There's 28 callers in queue that are going to come in. As they come in, I don't have their names.
No problem. I just thought, I thought he referenced, I thought I heard him say that he or Mr. Leahy could answer questions. I may have misunderstood what he said, so.
Well, let's just get clarity on this. Is Mr. Harris still on the line?
Mr. Harris?
Yeah.
Mr. Harris, is Mr. Leahy with you at the same place? Can you, is he available to, to address Supervisor Nattoli with his questions?
He is not with me, and so, based on this arrangement, you may have to wait until he's called in general to comment.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. That's fine.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other questions for the opposition, Madam Clerk, I believe, will now go to public comments.
Yes, I'm going to place you back on hold, Ted. Is that okay?
Yes, thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you.
And we're going to do three minutes each.
Okay. Let me just get. Please say three minutes. Hi caller, please state your name for the record. Hi caller, can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, there you go. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Pablo Benavides.
Okay, and you have three minutes.
Okay.
Go ahead with your comment.
Okay, so I'm calling on behalf of American River Ag. I've been working for them for about 13 years now. And they provided me with a great job and stability, you know, for me and my family, and I would hate to appreciate, you know, not to lose that, and all of the rest of my coworkers that work with me here and with me in Portland. Thank you. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your comment, and go ahead and start with your comment.
Hello, this is Gary Rubenstein. Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Gary Rubenstein. I'm an air quality consultant with Fall Weather Consulting.
Go ahead with your comment, please.
Sorry, I needed to turn the speakerphone off. I'm an air quality consultant with Fall Weather Consulting here today on behalf of American River Ag. I wanted to address a couple of the issues that were raised previously. As Mr. Rasmussen said at the beginning of American River Ag's presentation, there have been no verified complaints of odors since May 2nd, 2019. Since that date, there have been 30 complaints. All of those complaints were personally inspected by someone from the Sacramento Air District, and none of those complaints were verified. This was not happenstance. This was not a result of a decrease in the amount of potatoes being processed. Rather, there were two fundamental changes that were made at the facility. One was the elimination of the use of agricultural bags to store product prior to being processed. The last bags were used on May 2nd, 2019, which corresponds to the last complaint that was verified. In addition, beginning in June of 2019, American River Ag began using a new method for preparing and chopping potatoes that we have confirmed with air emission testing has substantially decreased the emissions of both air pollutants and odorous compounds. In these comments a few minutes ago, Mr. Harris suggested that the number of complaints have gone down because of an 80% reduction in processing due to restrictions imposed by the air district. My professional opinion, that statement is not correct. The decrease in, first of all, there has been no significant decrease in the number of complaint. There has been, however, the full elimination of any verified complaints, confirming that in fact, there were unacceptable levels of odor. And the decrease in verified complaints is directly attributable to the changes in processing at the facility. That concludes my comments. I'd be happy to answer any questions the board might have.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could just ask a question of the caller?
Yeah, we do have one question from Supervisor Nattoli.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Bernstein. I just, I wanted to be clear, make sure I understood your comment. I understand the connectivity to change in practices of how products are either processed and/or are brought to the facility, but you said that the information was put forward that there has been an 80% reduction in the volume of product processes inaccurate? So, you're currently, American River Ag is processing the same volume or comparable volume that you did a year ago?
I apologize, Supervisor, if I wasn't clear. I meant that the connection between the 80% reduction in processing and the decrease in complaints was not accurate.
Okay, okay. So, there has been a reduction. And is it 80% product reduction of throughput through the facility?
I don't know what the exact percent reduction.
Okay. But there has been a significant reduction.
But the important point with respect to odors is that the amount of material processed with each batch has not significantly changed. And if the amount processed for each batch, that would lead to, in the previous case, before May of 2019, the formation of enough compounds that would create odors.
Okay. All right. Thank you for the explanation. I appreciate it. Thanks.
Caller, please state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to make your comment, and please start with your comments.
My name's John Ambrose. My family and I have owned almond orchards for the use of the subject property for the past 20 years. Over the past nine years, American River Ag has grown their facility unabashedly into almost a 20-acre concrete industrial facility that drastically departs from the surrounding agricultural production of all of our farms. This company holds no regard to establishing and following best practices and guidelines. They don't take into account their community and neighbors they call it home, instead only focusing on their profits, while releasing untold amounts of toxins into the air we breathe and the water we drink and irrigate our crops with. It's appalling that this enterprise has been allowed to continue, as they blatantly ignored all code requirements, environmental standards, and Williamson Act land restrictions, let alone the health and safety of the community that they operate in. It's more appalling that instead of addressing this issue, the controlling authorities seem to be giving them a pass and advantage over other legitimate businesses that do follow the rules. It goes without saying that we are all experiencing challenging times currently, and with that said, jobs are meaningful. However, I think it's unreasonable to justify a handful of jobs over the health and life of our children and neighbors. Ultimately, I ask you to consider a very simple question. If you cannot honestly state that you would have no problem living next to this facility with your children and your families, we shouldn't be sentenced to with ours. Please do your job, do what's right, protect our children, our families, our farms, and our environment. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Caller, please state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to make your comments.
Paul Rushing.
Okay, please go ahead with your comments.
My name is Paul Rushing. I've been with American River Ag for 13 years, and it's been one of the absolute best experiences of my life. Great company. We hire we have several employees that are great people and nothing but a pleasure to work for. The community that we live in is an absolute beautiful community. I don't know what else to say about our company except that it's been a great experience. The Cortlandt facility is an absolutely beautiful facility that I look forward to getting up every morning to and going to work at. That's about all I have to say. Thank you for your time and have a great afternoon.
Great. You too. Thank you.
Please, please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to make your comment.
Brian Lehe.
Please make your comment.
I'm on?
Yes.
Okay. So supervisors? I'm sorry. Am I on?
Yes, you are on. If you have if you have the TV on or you're web streaming this, please turn down the volume.
Okay. I don't. Okay, so I'm sorry. My name is Brian Lehe. And I'll just turn that off. The okay, this is very the feedback's amazing. I'm a resident of Sacramento County, and I've been retained by the citizens of the Delta Community, whose lives and farm operations are being adversely affected by the intense industrial pet food manufacturing process that is occurring at the property. So I, you know, I Williamson Act is very complicated. I farmed 900 acres under it. I ran the Department of Conservation's Williamson Act program, among others. I ran was director of the Department of Pesticide Regulation in the Brown Administration. And I really this urban ag conflict is really challenging for California farmers and communities. And the Williamson Act was an early attempt to really address that. You know, 50 years ago before, we had CEQA and the other good planning strategies. The Williamson Act came in to try to preserve farmland and open space. And that's what that's what it's trying to do here. So the entire time that I ran the Williamson Act program, I never encountered an as an egregious violation of the Williamson Act is what's going on here. I can tell you that the cancellation of a Williamson Act contract is reserved for unique circumstances and in Sacramento County requires five statutory findings to be met, and the Board of Supervisors must find that the cancellation is in the public interest. And that public interest is public interest in the Williamson Act, looking at the Williamson Act's primary means. And this cancellation will require that at least four members of the Board of Supervisors vote to cancel. The five and please interrupt if there's questions, or I guess you could get to that at the end. The five statutory findings are, the first one which they have met, which is that a cancellation is for land on which a notice of nonrenewal has been served pursuant to the section 51245. The applicant has filed a notice of nonrenewal that commences with the nine-year nonrenewal period. This is the appropriate method for terminating a Williamson Act contract with cancellations being reserved for unique circumstances that meet the public interest in the five findings. The second one, the cancellation is not likely to result in the removal of adjacent lands from agricultural use. The applicant's uses currently create air quality issues, noxious odors that reside that residents and farm laborers must contend with, insect infestation, and increased traffic. These are all threatening the agricultural operations. The applicant's operation is concerned processing and manufacturing under the county zoning code that is in an area that sounds agriculture. And the fact that the neighbors are suing nuisance is shows you just how incompatible this.
Mr. Lee, can you please conclude your remarks?
The third one is that the cancellation is for an alternative use which is consistent with the provisions of the county general plan.
Mr. Lee.
Pardon?
Can you please conclude your remarks?
I cannot hear.
Can you please conclude your remarks?
Yes, your three minutes are concluded.
Let's see, I guess, you know, originally I was supposed to pardon?
You're finished.
Okay.
Your three minutes are up, sir. And we've got over 30 speakers.
Yeah, well, we were hoping to be part of the longer presentation with Ted.
I understand. I understand. Okay. Thank you for your remarks. Thank you. Supervisor Natale?
Yes, Mr. Lehe, I just a question I was going to ask earlier, and please try to be brief and responsive if you can. But you just said it, but in your letter that we received dated today, and obviously you've had experience in administering the Williamson Act program for Department of Conservation, I presume with the state of California. You make the comment that you've never encountered a quote, a more egregious violation of the Williamson Act than what is occurring at the American River Ag, and that this cancellation cannot be supported, again, I'm quoting you, by legal requirements of the Williamson Act. I don't presume that you're a lawyer giving legal advice here. But could you just take a brief time to elaborate? When you when you say that egregious violation, I mean, in your and I don't know how many years you were with the Department of Conservation, what is behind that statement? I just I just need to understand. Again, certainly you reference yourself as someone who has expertise in this, and I trust that's the case. But I'm curious about that, Mr. Lehe.
What I'm sorry, I have to apologize, but I'm having a really hard time following the question. I mean, just because of the sound is bouncing around. What was the the just the question is what?
Very briefly, hopefully you can hear me. In your letter dated today, and you in your comments, when you introduced your three-minute comments, you said you've never encountered a more egregious violation of the Williamson Act than what is occurring at the American River Ag. And you also, in the next sentence quoting you, said a cancellation of this contract cannot be supported by the legal requirements of the Williamson Act. You went through some of the new some of those numbers. But when you say it's the most egregious one you've encountered, I'm just curious, what's the what's the point of reference there, please?
Well, I like I said, in the five, six years that I was there, I never saw anything like this before, where we had such a blatant violations that affected the residents and the neighbor, you know, the neighboring farms, and that's being totally blown off. And usually they're more about, you know, processing. Processing is this is processing is a huge range of activity. It could be simple, you know, hauling of almonds to making wine like gallows processor. And there's rules and environmental and public health requirements to operate a business in California. This what's going on, you know, now is got the local farmers and residents and the farm workers, you know, it's putting them at risk and it's putting them, you know, it's really it is not what the Williamson Act was ever thought of. You know, this is what the Williamson Act was created to protect farms from and open space.
Okay, okay. No, that helps. Thank you so much for responding. I'm sorry you have difficulty hearing. So that helps. Thanks, Mr. Lehe.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please remind our speakers to turn down any device so that they avoid feedback?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Caller, please state your name for the record, and you also will be given three minutes to make your comments. If you are listening to the meeting in the background on any device, please mute those devices.
Hi, my name is Brandon Xavier. And American River Ag has been a great business partner of ours. They employ a large number of people at the Cortlandt facility. And if they are no longer available to keep that facility open, it will cause a detrimental loss of business to our company and many others like it, and will likely lead to our company having to lay off employees. The facility is well maintained, and they do an outstanding job with cleanliness and dust control.
Great. Thank you. I think we have a question from Supervisor Natale.
Yes, Brandon, if I could just ask you, thank you for your comments and for certainly your comments relative to your partnership with American River Ag. Could you please, if you wouldn't mind, tell us what your business is? And I assume you ship to this facility, but where you're located?
There's a bad echo. I could barely hear you.
Can you turn your any of the are you watching the meeting in the background?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
Okay.
Okay. Just very quickly, thanks, Mr. Thank you, Brandon, for your comments as relates to your partnership with this operator. I just wanted to know if you were so inclined, could you tell us the, you know, where your business is located? And I assume you ship product to to American River Ag. But could you tell us where you're located, please?
Yeah, our business is Janacek Company Incorporated. We're based out of Modesto, and we are a trucking company. Do a large amount of business to the Cortlandt facility for American River Ag.
Okay, very good. Thank you very much. And thanks for your comments.
I couldn't really hear your question, so I didn't answer at all.
No, you did.
Repeat it.
You know, you got it. Thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please state your name for the record. You will have three minutes to make your comments. If you are listening to the meeting in the background, could you please mute your device in the background? And then also, if you're on a speakerphone, please speak directly into the phone versus using your speakerphone. It gives better audio quality.
Sam Van Buren.
Are you on your speakerphone?
No.
Okay. And you have all the the meeting is turned down in the background?
There's nothing in the background.
Okay, great. Go ahead and make your comments, please. You'll have three minutes.
Yeah, I'm calling on behalf of American River Ag. I've worked here for nine years, approximately the same time that we passed the Cortlandt facility. It's been a great facility to work at, as well as American River Ag has been a great company to work for. There's been improvements to the facility over the past years. We provide at restaurants, art stores, and other businesses that we use for certain services around the facility. So that's all I've got to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi caller, you have please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please mute your device. And please go ahead with your comments.
Julia Herzog.
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Julia Herzog, fourth generation to live at the Herzog House, located half a mile from the plant. I moved back home here at least eight years ago. In that time, I've witnessed and experienced the nastiness the dog food plant produced. Many times, there would be a fogginess or haze in our little valley. The trucks hauling produce for the plant would drive so fast on the roads, and often the roads had to have patches or repairs done. The worst, though, by far, was the smell. The smell at times was putrid. As best I could describe, it smelled of sour potatoes or yams that was so strong, it caught in the back of your throat and made you want to gag. So strong with the smell, it would make your eyes water. The smell would wake me from sleep, and I'd have to run around the house, shutting the windows in the summertime, mind you, and not run the AC, since it would just pump in the smell more. I had to go to my doctor for a cough that wouldn't go away, lasting several months. I was embarrassed to bring over anyone for fear of them smelling the smell. If friends were over and I got a whiff of the smell, I'd tell my friends, you better go quick. It's just going to get worse. Closing windows was no help. It penetrated your whole house. We could not get away from it. We had to suffer. It was our nightmare we were living in daily. It was torture. As a closing concern, if we, the people, are being infected by the air and smell, then aren't the grapes or other produce being grown around being affected as well? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please silence your device, those meetings, and go ahead and start with your comments. Caller, are you on the phone?
Jackson Minassian.
Go ahead.
How do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm an attorney for a number of the neighbors. Somebody has sold you a story that you consider the public interest and whether cancel the purposes of cancellation are substantially outweighed by the purposes of the Act. And there's zero support for this in the statute. The idea that you would consider the public interest without considering the public and the adverse impacts, I think is going to be very embarrassing if you were challenged on this. And so that's the main question you'd be asked in court. And when you really look at this, they poured 18 acres of concrete over Williamson Act lands, started importing tens of thousands of tons of rotten vegetables, no use permit, missing three air district permits, a collection of public nuisance violations, and emissions that are so toxic, your air district this fall imposed a compliance order and enforcement action, limiting their volume to one-fifth of what it was. Now, in our age of buzzwords like environmental justice and social justice, what is the public interest in those facts? Is there a public interest in Tom Herzog missing half his stomach from cancer, recovering from chemotherapy, gagging from the gases? Is there a public interest in Kurt Johnson, third generation Delta Pharma, seeing the lands of his forefathers be made unbearable, disgusting by out-of-county operators? Is there a public interest in Kathy Baronic, never complained in her life, crying when she talks about what it's been like? Is there a public interest in Sarah Andrews and her children not being able to breathe? I'm asking you these questions now, but you're going to answer them in court if you do this. Oh, but the jobs, the economy, there might be something to that if they were to remit their profits to the individuals who suffering is funding them. But that's not this case. They're just lining their pockets by lining the neighbors' lungs, and that's not capitalism. Capitalism is an exchange of value with consent, not pouring a bunch of concrete, making life a living hell for your neighbors. And when they complain, telling them they can move somewhere safer. No, taking things by force, cheating, that's not capitalism. This isn't Russia. Now, it really doesn't matter whether they employ five, 25, 105 employees. They have no right. The neighbors were there first. It's first in time, first in right. The neighbors don't consent. Really, the applicant's got all the legal problems in the world, swimming in glue. If you do this, you'll be jumping in with them. The individuals I represent will never accept this, never. You will be sued. And right next to the applicant in court, trying to explain for the next two years what the public interest was, why you did this, and you'll be asking yourselves the same question. And I think it will haunt you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Hi caller, please state your name for the record and you have three minutes to make your comment. If you're listening to the meeting on another device in the background, please mute that while you make your public comments.
Okay, uh, hello, my name is Thomas Card. I'm a near quality consultant. I participated in the, um, at the American River Ag Cultural Society, and there's been a lot of comments about air emissions, and I'd like to put some of those comments in perspective. Uh, for example, uh, the most regulated pollution currently in Sacramento County jurisdiction is VOCs, and the pickers are the ozone, since ozone contamination is their biggest problem. Uh, the VOC emissions, uh, that were measured at the site are essentially comparable to a cornfield. And so, uh, from a VOC emissions perspective, which is the most regulated emissions, um, in the jurisdiction, you know, it's essentially the same as a typical agricultural emission. Uh, and that's big enough in my comments, and I'd be happy to take questions.
Great, thank you.
Give me one second, I'm going to switch the microphone. Hi caller, please state your name for the record and you have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please silence those devices while you're making your comments.
This is Chris Wakeman. I live directly across and downwind from this industrial facility. I've been associated with the property for 29-plus years and the families around there. I hope all of you have reviewed all the documents that our attorney and we have sent you before making your decision today. This isn't about farmers versus farmers are being vindicated. This is about a very shady company that has done everything wrong without proper permits or approval from any agency, with zero concerns for public health or safety. I own a business and trust me, permits and approval are not easy, but they're required. ARA thinks they're above all this. They truck in uncovered rotten potatoes across county roads, destroying the roads. The rotten potatoes are stored in bags, then dried on concrete pads. 18 acres of concrete pads that per the Williamson Act is to protect open space for farming, not industrial use and pouring concrete. It provides tax relief and credit to farmers, which ARA has received and has benefited from the Williamson Act. Last I checked, you cannot farm concrete, seed in concrete, harvest or disc or grow anything in concrete. The rotten potatoes, potatoes produce a toxic, nasty, putrid smell. It's like smelling vomit. It's disgusting. We used to enjoy the delta breeze with the windows open, now we call, we call it the delta stench, with the windows closed and sit inside because of the smells, why and that. We cannot entertain outside or plan family functions because you never know when the smell will come. It's very stressful. Once the potatoes dry on the concrete, they grind them up. Toxic particles and dust clouds form all over the area which we breathe and have health issues, such as asthma. ARA has given out the phone number for complaints. We've called, we've complained, they've done nothing. This meeting is another last-ditch stalling tactic by trying to get the Williamson Act contract canceled so they can try and get the necessary permits, which they have been denied. And the air quality board has reduced them to 20% total volume due to excessive toxicity levels after 70-plus confirmed smell and particle complaints and testing. ARA also knows their property values double with the contract canceled. It's funny that they pay taxes on $214,000 for a property that is worth well over $3 million, while they have impacted and reduced our property values substantially. In closing, I ask that you deny the cancellation of the Williamson Act contract and enforce it. They entered into it, they should have to honor what they have profited from. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Caller, please state your name for the record and you have three minutes to make your public comment. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please silence that device.
Hello, this is Sheila Lamb Carroll, and I represent American River Ag. It's been suggested today that American River Ag is some sort of rule breaker or scoff law. I've represented them for over a dozen of years in various processes and matters and with compliance. And I can tell you that they go out of their way to comply with rules and regulations and to be a good employer in the Sacramento community. It's important to note that the process that they're going through, that conditional use permit process is a long one, and they are not out of compliance right now, they're in the process of getting the permit. The Williamson Act challenge, if you will, came up, um, due to a new interpretation of the Williamson Act that had not been in effect previously. When they purchased the land, and I was their lawyer at the time, um, the prior use had been that of an alfalfa plant. It's not that different from the present use. If you go out to the property, you will see potatoes being sun-dried, and we have had those potatoes analyzed for safety and toxicity, and they are not unsafe. And I'd like you to look carefully at, um, your own staff report, which makes a lot of sense with respect to the very narrow issue here, which is the Williamson Act issue, and as well as the comments of Ms. Madarazzo and Mr. Rasmussen and John Conboy. So, thank you for consideration today, and please limit this to the Williamson Act issue, and find a way for this business to keep going. This is a good employer and a good business in our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please state your name for the record, you have three minutes to make your comments. If you are, uh, listening to the meeting in the background, please silence your device.
Um, hello, my name is Deborah Chan, and I ask that you give me a moment or two to pull over because I am in my car.
We want you, we want you to be safe.
There we go. Can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, my name is Deborah Chan. I live on the north edge of Cortland, and I thank you for taking my call today. Uh, our family has been part of the Cortland community for over 100 years, and my children are those close neighbors that we've been hearing about earlier. In fact, the property we're talking about was formerly in my son-in-law's family for many, many generations. We have two young grandchildren, one of whom is only two weeks old, and their health and safety is of paramount importance to me. I'm very concerned about the pollution and the toxicity and the downright stink that American River Ag Company, AKA the dog food factory, has and is putting into the air, watering the earth in my community. This directly affects my family. Therefore, I am asking you to please deny the petition of American River Ag and its related companies and individuals to cancel their Williamson Act contract. I do not believe this company has been acting in good faith, and I would ultimately like any subsequent permit request be denied tonight as well. Uh, very disturbing also has been the blatant disrespect, as it seems to me, and disregard of rules, laws, and regulations, common decency, and fairness that this company has appeared to display. They have, in my opinion, violated terms and conditions of the Williamson Act with their actions, and they're now trying to cancel their contract and in doing so, try to find a workaround in order to continue their activities. I hate to think that theirs could be a precedent for other entities to follow. This delta community is far too valuable to be taken such advantage of. I thank you again for your time.
Great, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Uh, if you could, if you, well, did we lose her?
She's here.
Okay, I think we have one question from Supervisor Intoli for you.
Yeah, thanks, Ms. Chan, for your comments. I just wanted to be sure, because I knew you were getting started your comments. You said your family's been over 100 years in farming in the Cortland area, was that accurate? I want to make sure I heard that correctly. Okay, and so, is, did I take that it was four generations?
Excuse, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you.
No, I'm just asking, so if you, you're, there's four or five generations of, of farmers in the Cortland area, or descendants in that family, is that right?
That's right.
Okay, very good. Just, I want to be clear. Thanks a lot for your comments, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
Hi caller, please state your name for the record, you have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please mute those devices while you're talking.
Captain Baronic.
Yes, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Okay. Before I begin, I'd like to thank the Board of Supervisors for letting us express our concerns over the cancellation of the Williamson Act contract on the parcel owned by American River Ag. Our major concern is that if you grant American River Ag cancellation of the Williamson Act contract, they will go right back to bringing in rejected produce brought in to the facility. Then they spread it out on their 18-acre cement pads, and as it rots and is sun-dried, extremely foul toxic gases and clouds of dust and fruit flies are created. With prevailing west wind, all the dust, insects, and smell comes wafting over the whole district and waterways. The county staff has recommended to the Board of Supervisors that for the good of the public interest, the American River Ag Company should be granted a cancellation of the Williamson Act contract. The meaning of public interest is anything affecting the rights, health, and finances of the public at large. What public interest exactly is the staff referring to, then? It certainly isn't the rights, health, and/or finances of the delta community and adjacent properties to their facility. The staff totally disregarded the outcome of the two advisory committee's determinations. The Sacramento County Ag Advisory Committee voted seven to zero, a unanimous vote, to oppose the cancellation of the Williamson Act. The Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council voted nine to zero to oppose the cancellation of the Williamson Act. Yet county staff disregarded their recommendations. Are your advisory committees just in name only, or are they appointed to help you make sound decisions for the communities they serve? Clearly, there is a total disrespect for the Pearson District landowners as well. Not only have many of these families been farming there for generations, but many have contributed countless volunteer hours to help make the delta a beautiful place to live for our families, our farm workers, the people that come to enjoy the beautiful waterways, and our community as a whole. Personally, my family has farmed on the same property for 118 years. We and the adjacent landowners are the public that have been 100% affected by the American River Ag operation. For years, we've been complaining about the adverse effects of their operation. We never know from day to day if we can plan a family gathering without worrying about whether our neighbor is going to process that rotten produce, which we have absolutely no control over. All our complaints are legitimate, and they have been ignored and blatantly disregarded. Please take into consideration the recommendation from your county ag advisory. I'm sorry?
Can you conclude your remarks, please?
Uh, your.
We need you to please wrap up your remarks.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Caller, please state your name for the record and you have three minutes to make your comments. If you are listening to the meeting in the background, please silence that device while you're talking. Thank you. Go ahead and start with your comments, please, if you can state your name.
Laura Herzog. I live on Herzog Road. I've lived here for 40 years. My husband's family's been here for 118 years. I've raised five children here. I just want you to know that those people that are talking about the dog food plant are not here 24/7. They're not here at 11 o'clock at night when I'm taking my dogs out, and it's so stinky that I just tell them, "Hurry up and potty so we can go back in," because it's so bad. Somebody asked me, "How are you surviving during the, the virus?" I said, "Hey, I wouldn't know the difference. I have to wear a mask at my own house. It's so bad." The stuff that comes off that thing looks like thule fog creeping over the top of the vines. I don't know where these people are. I called four times in one day just to get the air people. By the time they get down here, it's gone. Hey, come camp in my yard! Smell it! Let yourself get sick, because we're getting sick, and it's an emotional thing. We can't do anything outside, we can't plan anything. Our company says, "No, meet us in town." We're not coming. I have a 28-year-old daughter who's handicapped, who can't even go outside when that stuff is going because it's so bad. I take her to the doctors, they tell her, "No, there's nothing wrong with you." It's like, "No, there is. You can't breathe, you're wheezing, you're headaches." We never have headaches. Dry, itchy eyes? Come on, folks, if you really want to know what it's like, come camp in my yard. I'm more than welcome to let you stay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hold on one, hold on one second.
Hi caller, uh, please state your name for the record, you have three-
Hold on just one second, I have to answer this call from a, like, hi, real quick. I'll be right back. Hello?
Hi, you're in-
You're up, or, or, or we're going to move on to other speakers.
It's very difficult to hear you.
Okay, please state your name for the record, you have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, uh, turn that down while you're talking.
I don't have anything in the background. This is Dr. Sierra Andrews, and, uh, I want to share with your, uh, panel that the dust and toxic gases produced by the ARA plant have caused me several life-threatening asthma attacks. My husband has had to call 911 and rush me to the fire department because I was unable to breathe. I have collapsed in front of my children. My youngest child has developed severe asthma, and he's living constant fear of the health consequences he's suffering. I sit up with him at night as he cries and gasps for breath. "I can't breathe, the dust is too thick, mommy, help me." The stench is intolerable, has kept all of our friends and family away. We have canceled and had to pay for private venues for all birthday parties, anniversaries, and social events for almost a decade. We have a 22-acre parcel with ample room and beach access, which we used to be able to use to socialize. This is no more. The fruit flies infect our house on a daily basis. I have glasses with apple cider vinegar in every room filled with dead bugs. It's an atrocity that they are being allowed to cause so much harm, not just illness, but all well-being, mental well-being, as a mother worries for the well-being of her children, and children watching their mother collapse with asthma, are the products that they are producing. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks, you.
Hi caller, please state your name for the record, you have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please silence that while you're Hi, caller, are you there?
Yeah.
Go ahead, if you're there. That's my mom.
Hi caller, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please silence that while you're talking.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Robert Exterrier. I'm an attorney. I represent American River Ag in its lawsuit with a number of the people who are speaking here today. I know you'll keep this in mind, but it's important for all of you to remember that most of the people, I guess including myself, have a dog in this fight. Now, most of the people that have commented here today have gotten pretty far away from what we're supposed to be talking about here today, which is the Williamson Act, and whether or not this particular Williamson Act contract should be canceled. I've listened to all the air quality complaints. That's being litigated in a different forum. I will say that my client has been dealing with the air quality board for a long period of time. They've gone through a very open process of testing to meet those requirements, and the people you're hearing complain about air quality have been a part of that process. I'm an ag lawyer, and at base I go across living California defending farmers, saying growers, and defending people who are part of the processing chain. And as COVID has shown us, that processing chain is very, very fragile. And every time one of these places disappears, it has a ripple effect. It has a ripple effect on the growers. It has a ripple effect on the price of the food that we all eat. And there's a reason why people are trucking products into Cortland to be processed. It's because these kinds of places are disappearing. If you follow your staff's advice, and your staff doesn't have a dog in this fight, your staff has the expertise and has listened to everybody's arguments, I think you're going to be well-served, and I think you should do that. I don't think you should listen to a bunch of people who don't live here. I don't think you should listen to the people who have been hired by a guy named Ken Ambrose, a San Francisco property developer, who moved to Cortland to buy a private waterski. You know, there's a reason why all these people are here, and you should think about who's paying them, and you should think about the motives involved. Thank you for your time. I'm going to do what's very difficult for a lawyer. Be quiet now. I hope you make the right decision. Thank you.
Good, thank you.
Hi caller, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please silence that while you're talking. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Hello, this is Curtis Hagan. My wife and I have lived our lifetime as Cortland residents. Growing up in the fabled North Delta has instilled in me a lifetime appreciation and love for our community, the Delta waterways, and the surrounding farmland, and also has inspired my 33-year career as a wild balance manager for the California Department of Fish and Wildlife. As neighbors of ARA's facility, we have suffered greatly from their illegal operations dating back to 2014. ARA's industrial processing of rejected rotten human food produces toxic gas emissions of a magnitude that is off the scale of foul odors. They produce particulate matter and insects that leave their property and permeate our home to the extent that we have had to run indoors, close up the windows to escape. This assault is unpredictable and causes ever-present worry. I disagree with the county staff's recommendation that it is in the public interest to allow them to cancel their Williamson Act contract. We, the public that live here, cannot see how anyone's definition of public interest will be served if so granted. Please support and acknowledge the zoning and planning director's determination that ARA's facility is industrial, not agricultural processing. Thus, that will remove a lot of the support that county staff used to rationalize their decision. And please recognize the Sacramento County Agriculture Advisory Committee's unanimous vote to deny the petition to cancel. I grew up with Heringer family kids and spent time at the Heringer family alfalfa mill, and can attest that ARA's facility that sits on that site bears no resemblance to that historic use. As a supporter of local agriculture and a law-abiding citizen of the county, I support all forms of agriculture businesses that conduct operations legally, responsibly, and properly permitted. We should not reward individuals who attempt to eliminate or change the rules when they are caught violating them. In closing, supervisors, I urge you to deny ARA's petition to cancel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please silence that while you're talking. And go ahead and start, please.
Hi, good afternoon. This is Jackie Hagan, and thank you for taking our comments today, Supervisor. I also am a lifelong resident here in Cortland and the Pearson District, and I have the deepest appreciation for this area and the neighboring ranches, and that has made it the best farming community anywhere, in my opinion. And I've grown up here, ridden my horse to the Herso Ranch back and forth, and have gone onto the Heringer pellet mill years ago to purchase alfalfa pellets for my horse. And that mill right now, the use of that historic area, doesn't resemble anything that it used to be. And it produces toxic emissions, particulate matter and insects, as we've been hearing from others. And they drift onto our property and homes. It's unpredictable. I feel like a hostage in my own house, and my husband might have to retreat from our yard, which we enjoy very much. And one of the big parts of the joy I have here on my little ranch is that I'm a licensed egg producer with about 60 laying hens, and there's times when the air quality effect from ARA is so bad on our property that I'm unable to properly tend to the flock until the air clears. And I also disagree with the county staff's recommendation that it's in public interest to allow them to cancel the Williamson Act contract. We're the public, and we can't see how in anyone's definition of public interest this would serve us if it's granted. Please support and acknowledge the zoning and planning director's determination that ARA's facility is industrial. It's not agricultural. And please recognize that the Sacramento County's Ag Advisory Committee's unanimous vote to deny the petition to cancel. We're all law-abiding citizens here, and we support agricultural businesses that operate legally, responsibly, and secure the proper permit. And again, as we've heard, shouldn't reward individuals who attempt to eliminate or change the rules when they're caught violating them. And I would like to close by urging supervisors to deny the ARA's petition to cancel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please silence that while you're talking. And go ahead and start with your comments.
Thank you. Hi, my name's Katie Sinton. I'm an employee, the HR Director and Office Manager for American River Ag. I can attest to the fact that we have never had a single claim from any employee for sickness, asthma, cancer, or breathing issues. I find it unbelievable that the residents could make these claims. I ask that you please consider taking action to cancel the Williamson Act and help our business thrive for the future. And thank you.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please silence that while you're talking, and go ahead and start.
Hi, my name is Inez Whitlow. I am calling in on behalf of American River Ag. I am in favor of them being able to move forward to continue drying dog food. Growing up in the country, country life smells. There's no getting around it. As a young child, I was on that property with my dad. He called hay and alfalfa. I've been a longtime supporter of the Delta, American River Ag, and I don't see that there's any other issues. It smells when the food starts rotten all throughout the season. It's not just one person. And I'm having a hard time listening to all the people and their comments that American River Ag is the only polluter down there and the only one who has a smell. I think maybe moving forward, we might want to add a lavender farm down there, because it just sounds horrible. But again, agricultural life, it's not the greatest smelling. So I would ask that you are in favor of moving forward to keep American River Ag a business. And thank you so very, very much. They're great people, and they do a lot for our community. Thank you for allowing me to talk.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please silence that while you're talking. And go ahead and start, please.
Bill Stokes. Thank you, Board of Supervisors. I farm in the area next to American River Ag, and it, all the time, especially in the evening, there is odor, dust, things like that. It's almost like living next to a garbage pit or a landfill. So I think that, I know there's a lot of land issues being talked about, but it's a field issue as well. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please silence that while you're talking. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Katrina Heringer. I was born and raised in Cortland. My children will be the fifth generation who live in Cortland on my side of the family. My husband's family has been farming and dwelling in the Delta for even more generations than mine, and we have a right to live in and enjoy the Delta community that our families helped create and have enjoyed for many generations. My husband, two children, and I live half a mile away from American River Ag in Cortland. I strongly oppose the cancellation of their Williamson Act contract. When they are up and running at capacity, we are frequently forced indoors by the smell coming from their operations. It's a heavy, pungent odor that makes your eyes water and makes it difficult to breathe and makes you feel nauseous, which limits our ability to socialize with our friends and our children outdoors and hold outdoor events. It's limited our ability to exercise outside or utilize our shop space. And to help illustrate the type of neighbor that this dog food factory is separate from the smell, well, they have allowed their employees to use their facility as a shooting range. And one of their employees actually shot our house with a high-powered rifle while we were home, and that bullet shattered the sliding glass door to our bedroom and lodged in our bed. The sheriff had to come remove the bullet from our bed. And less than ten minutes earlier, my husband and I, along with our then-three-year-old son, had been standing right in front of where the bullet went. So months later, when we heard them shooting again, my husband asked the owners to please stop the shooting, and he explained how terrifying it is, hearing any sort of shooting coming from the facility after what had happened previously. It's a miracle no one was killed, and we have no way of knowing if they are shooting shotguns or rifles towards our house again. The owner's response was abhorrent. His words and actions have shown that he has no regard for our community or the people who call it home. This company clearly has no regard for the health and safety of the people who call this area home. Their operations have severely impacted our quality of life. We've been affected by the smell and the operations of the American River Ag Company physically, socially, mentally, emotionally, and psychologically. The dog food factory has been determined to be a public nuisance multiple times by the Air Board. The facility does not belong near homes. It certainly does not belong near children, and this is not what the property was intended for. It's not consistent with its historical use and is what the Williamson Act is designed and in place to prevent. So again, I strongly oppose the cancellation of their Williamson Act contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please silence that while you're talking, and go ahead and start with your comments. Caller, are you on the phone?
Speaker, are you there?
Kurt Johnson?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead.
Yes. My name is Kurt Johnson. I own and operate J. H. Johnson &amp; Sons Incorporated, which is a third-generation farming company. So I am pro-agriculture. I live within 3/4 of a mile from American River Ag's facility. I've lived here for 36 years. I would like to clarify a little that was stated in the county staff report. American River Ag twice stated that they are using the facility the same as it has been done for the last 40 years. That is totally false. The Heringer family built and owned the original alfalfa plant facility. They owned all the surrounding property in which they grew their own alfalfa and processed it into alfalfa pellets. They also would buy alfalfa from neighboring farmers, which my family occasionally sold to. This was a win-win situation for Sacramento County and its agricultural community. Then American River Ag comes in and buys one parcel containing just the structures on it. They proceed to import rotting and decaying sweet potatoes that are not suitable for human consumption. These sweet potatoes are not grown in Sacramento County, or the Sacramento River Delta, or even locally. 80% of the sweet potatoes grown in California come from Merced County. The rest is grown in Fresno and Stanislaus County. This is where American River Ag sources their sweet potatoes, contributing only benefits to the agricultural communities of those counties. The processing activities American River Ag uses expose Sacramento County citizens from the towns of Cortland, Locke, and Walnut Grove to a stench smell that will gag you, to dust particles that contain known toxins, to infestations of fruit flies generated from their rotting potatoes, to wildlife and rodents feasting on their outside smorgasbord, to the destruction of our roads by their heavy trucks. And they want to be good neighbors? So as far as the public interest to Sacramento County, I only see one positive that American River Ag has created, and that is just a few jobs in Sacramento County to run their processing plant. I see multiple negatives to the exposure American River Ag has created to citizens of Sacramento County with no real benefit for the county or its agricultural community. I would also like to clarify the false impression county staff sent in their report on the vote by the Agricultural Advisory Committee. I was in attendance at that meeting, and every one of the members were quite clear they knew what they were voting on. They seen through the lies that this facility is good for Sacramento County and its agricultural community. They saw it does nothing for agriculture, but wanted to preserve the right of a farmer in the Williamson Act contract to be able to process his own commodities and build infrastructures-- infrastructures on his property, just like the local pear growers do and their packing shed.
Can you please conclude your remarks?
Okay. I totally respect and agree with these comments. The Williamson Act was enacted to preserve agriculture and urban and industrial development. That along with the other facts made here, let me get clear that we need your vote against the cancellation of the Williamson Act on this property.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Caller, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please silence.
Hello?
Hi. Please silence the meeting in the background while you're talking. Go ahead and state your name.
Hello?
Yeah, go ahead. You have three minutes.
This is John Baronic. The county staff's recommendations to the Board of Supervisors are questionable. How can you make this statement? It's in the public interest to cancel the Williamson Act contract. How can this be a fact? The adverse impacts of the industrial processing of the potatoes, sweet potatoes, and soybeans to the environment. The public and the environment of the Reclamation District are exposed to toxic pollutants of the air, water, and soil. The county staff left out the environmental fact and analysis provided in a comment letter February 7, 2020. The county staff reported that the existing use is an agricultural use. In June 19, 2017, the Ag Commissioner's Office said the processing operation was not an agricultural use. The Agricultural Advisory Committee recommended denial, seven to zero, of the cancellation request. The county staff also reported that the Ag Advisory Committee supported the use of the site for primary processing use. The staff took out of context what was expressed by the Ag Committee. The Ag Advisory Committee expressed that agriculture processing is a compatible use for the Williamson Act contracts in general. The Ag Advisory Committee took no position on the dog food site used, other than the Williamson contract should not be canceled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please state your name for the record and you have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please silence that while you're Caller, please state your name for the record. You're on the, you're in the meeting now.
Hello?
Hello. Go ahead, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can hear you. Please go ahead with your comments.
Okay. Good afternoon. The Board of Supervisors, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Paul O'Jenner. And my family has been farming here in the Delta for over a hundred and twenty years we've been here. There is in the Williamson Act to protect the land, to protect the land, and use the property only. And we want to consider that, um, that we have some, or even like that. I think a lot of us, like, my two grandchildren, they're down from their, uh, the south with the, uh, and they are having, we did this a couple of days, with this toxic dust and a lot of this smell that's coming from the, um, so they've been having respiratory problems, asthma, cough, allergies. The plant is operating without a permit. So I don't know how that's possible. So please consider the help to all the people around here and there. So that's, uh, that's the thing. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi caller, please state your name for the record and you have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please silence that while you're talking.
Yes. My name is Thomas Herzog. Uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Well, it's right off the bat, I want to make it known, somebody made the comment that we were not local people talking here. We are the neighbors here talking and we are not being paid by anybody to speak. We are speaking from our hearts. I want to thank the Board for letting me speak today. I'm Thomas Herzog, a third-generation retired farmer. My family had farmed here for over a hundred years. My family and I live and own my late parents' farmhouse and property, which is about 3,500 feet from the vegetable dog food drying facility on Alfalfa Plant Road. I was raised as a child on this property, enjoyed the blessings of a dairy farm as a child, and as a teenager worked on the farm, which became open land farming in the late 50s. Served four years in the Air Force and then came back to farm and farm for the remaining years until I retired. As you can see, I've been here most of my 71 years and enjoyed Delta fresh air until this plant seemed alone. My family, my family feels strongly that as residents that we shouldn't have to close our homes airtight, not be able to enjoy our natural outdoors, and should be able to use our residence as family, as a family farm household should. We have been experiencing the nausea scum, insects, and toxic particular matter that the drying of decaying sweet potatoes creates for a number of years since it first started. This has made us most vulnerable, causing our family to experience wheezing, coughing, nausea, and headaches. The smell alone has the quality of vomit or something die. Many times, a white particular matter does blow the loft spreading over our area. We have at times had high amounts of fruit flies invade our property and household. When we complained, they just ignored us and did business as usual. It wasn't until Don the Toad got involved that the Air Resources took the notice and started observing what was happening. Hey, many thanks to you, Don. They have virtually shut, they have been virtually shut down to one-tenth of their operation because of their enforcement and are laying low towards creating any big nuisance disturbances. I really don't trust them if they get back to 100% because of their past history. They have operated this plant apparently without proper permitting, didn't keep within the guidelines of the Williamson Act, uncovered prime agriculture lands with the cement. In short, they have not been a good responsible area and what they do in our area is not in the agricultural interest, but a processing plant bringing rotten and unused products to outside of our county. We believe that we are greater public interest and we are affected by what is happening and still has. Not only are we affected by the emissions of this operation, but the area is mainly in grape growing, of which many hunters and farm workers are exposed to this. Being this greater public interest, we feel this contract should be canceled, further, should not be canceled. Excuse my, uh, furthermore, they didn't grow or produce any product on the premise or in the Delta area. The history of the rental site was owned by the, by our neighbor Harringer, who grew hay on the, for their hay processing plant. I hope this gives you some idea of what we have to deal with. The Williamson Act contract should not be canceled and they should require to stop or come to some mitigation means.
Mr. Herzog, can you please conclude your remarks?
Delta clean environment.
Mr. Herzog?
Thank you for hearing my position and time today.
Thank you.
Caller, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please silence that while you're talking.
Hello?
Yes. Go ahead and start with your comments, please.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. My name is Doug Chan and I'm a third-generation resident farmer in the community of Cortland. As a lifelong farmer in the Cortland area, I am well familiar with the history and location of the property in question. This property was owned by several entities over the years, including McCormick Williamson Company, which also owns much of the surrounding farmland with High Steel Farm. Historically, this property has always been used to process alfalfa and other hay products into cubes, pellets, and compact bales for domestic use as well as shipment overseas, with no complaints from the community. As a grower of fruits and vegetables and a dog lover, I do believe American River Ag's business of taking off grapefruits and vegetables and turning it into a dog food supplement does have merit. However, it must be done in compliance with all the rules, regulations set forth by the federal, state, county, and local authorities, without damaging the environment and causing a health risk to the people living in the area. Not only does the smell and dust affect the families living near the facility, but in a certain condition, the toxic smell and dust blows towards the town of Cortland. Many of its residents are elderly and retired with health issues. And then there's the school, which has a couple hundred kids, K-26th, and the school for children of migrant workers. Under certain, under certain conditions, we could be jeopardizing the health of our children. In 1986 and in 1997, we witnessed serious flooding in the district, flooding thousands of acres in the lowest parts of the district, including this property. Most of the property had water running through the barns, across the property, into the district canals. My concern is that in a flood event, could the floodwaters rushing across the property mingle with the dog food product, creating a dog food slurry and wash into the district canals? The mixture of dog food would eventually be pumped into the snowgrass slough and possibly contaminating the water of the state, including the environmentally sensitive areas known as the meadows. These are some of my concerns as to how this operation has and could impact our community and environment. I thank the Board for listening to my comments and I hope these comments will help you make an informed decision in this matter.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, before we continue, I'm aware that there are a number of folks that have, just in the last minute or 30 seconds, are beginning to come in requesting to speak. I'm going to say we're going to cut it off in the next five minutes for anyone that needs to, or feels compelled to, to address the war on this matter.
Yes, and just so you know, when they're calling in, there's a little bit of a delay, so we'll try to manage that as best as we can.
Very good, thank you.
Caller, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please silence that while you're talking and go ahead and start. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Todd Balastri. I work for American River Ag. I've been with the organization for a little bit now. I've known the owners and founders of this organization for 25-plus years. This is an ag business with generations of ag staff. This is not a processing plant, so to speak. Compliance, values, a sense of community are all values of what this organization represents. You know, farmland in general is subject to natural smell. The comments that we've heard so far, some of them have talked about potatoes that are rotten. That is absolutely not accurate. What we do is actually go into the farmland, get the potatoes that are not, these are all food-grade quality products that are then processed for pet food and livestock. This is not a facility that is just out there not following the rules, you know. The Air Board, we've actually hired outside staff to go out there and handle just an outside testing mechanism so that we can know what's going on. This is really, this all gets back to, I think, an agenda to get the land and it's kind of, it's just sad that it's got to this point. I think in the end, what we're trying to, what we're trying to communicate to everybody is we're not using opinions, we're using facts. The property's changed over the years, for sure, no question. But if you look at what it was, what it is now, we're a company that is invested in the community. I think that that's one of the, one of the things that everybody in the neighborhood is looking for. We want to be a compliant neighbor. We want to be partners with the neighbors and we hope that they can, they can see that in the end. Thank you.
Caller, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your comments. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please turn that down while you're talking and go ahead and start, please.
My name is Darren Gleason and I'm the CEO of American River Ag and I just want to make a couple of comments. In 2011, when we purchased this property, it was abandoned. You know, there was fires out there, there was stuff, weeds growing taller than myself. There were squatters out there, there was goats out there. And, you know, we went out there and we cleaned it up. We got it looking presentable, started a real business out there, and we put people to work. And, you know, in 2000, you know, until a couple of years ago, so from 2011 to 2017, we didn't hear much of anything from the local community there about complaining about what we were doing out there. But then all of a sudden, a gentleman by the name of Ken Ambrose came into the picture and, you know, rallied the troops. And I've heard a lot of these people, they're on the call today that, you know, they're in litigation with us on this, so they have a vested interest in what they're trying to do. And, you know, I mean, we've been harassed. I mean, they've put fake airboxes, Ken Ambrose put a fake airbox next to our property. They've flown drones over the top of our employees' heads and he's flown his helicopter under what I would consider illegal heights over our property. And so just take into consideration that there's a lot more going on here than, you know, the complaint of a smell. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Hello, this is Chuck Schmidt.
Go ahead and start with your comments, please.
Hi, this is Chuck Schmidt. I conducted the air emissions testing out of the American River Ag facility and at the request of the Air Board and the site owner, I'm a PhD analytical chemist, working as an environmental consultant since 1980. I have my own business, it's a sole proprietor now for 31 years, and I live in beautiful Red Bluff, California. In the early 80s, I developed an area source testing technology for EPA known as the EPA Flux Chamber Technology. This chamber technology can be used on solid sludges and liquid surfaces. It directly measures air emissions from area sources for both volatile, organic, and inorganic compounds, including olfactory odor or human nose-detected odor. The EPA Flux Chamber Technology is just the leading and preferred emissions assessment technology regarding accuracy, precision, and representativeness of area source emission. Most of my consulting work involves using this technology to assess air emissions from area sources, largely for permitting work or permit compliance. My clients include various government agencies, including air districts, private industry, and municipalities. The data obtained from the EPA Flux Chamber Technology is known as mass transfer data or flux data, which is an engineering unit that describes the mass of compounds emitted over time per surface. over time per surface area. Now, knowing the compound flux and the area of the source, you can calculate emissions from a site. My partner, Tom Carr, who's an engineer, he takes the flux data I collect, and he generates emission factors for study compounds. It's these factors that are used, along with the operational data, to represent site emissions for various purposes and compliance needs. The testing conducted at the American River Ag facility was robust, with a total of 85 flux tests, including quality control tests. All work was conducted following a detailed standard operating protocol approved by the air district. Flux data were calculated from area sources on-site, with the focus on drying cycle of chopped sweet potatoes and chopped tubers. Compounds emissions were found to be relatively low, and many types of compounds that were tested for were not detected at all. Total hydrocarbon compound emissions can be used for permitting purposes, odor emissions can be used to predict off-site odor, and volatile organic compound species emissions were used for health risk analysis performed by Dr. Greenberg. The risk calculated for the annual site emissions were found to be less than the criteria of one chance in a million for contracting cancer. The testing was conducted following the protocols established by EPA for flux chamber testing, meeting all quality control objectives, and the laboratory methods met all data quality expectations. That's about it.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. Caller, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your comment. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please turn that off while you're talking.
Yes, my name is Ron Sangretti.
Go ahead, please.
Go ahead, Mr. Sangretti.
Yes, I'm a recreation user in the area. Been going up to the state recreation area, I think it's the state recreation area that's called the Meadows, for about 40 years, and we've been parking our houseboat on Snodgrass Slough, that's about three-quarters of a mile from this industrial facility, for about 20 years. And we observed that there's probably hundreds of people and families boating and fishing each week in this area. So I'd just like to recite my experience with the smell. I'm not an expert in toxicology, or I don't have a flux capacitor, you know, measuring device, but I'd like to tell my story. And a number of years ago, we just experienced an unbearable toxic smell from industrial plant off of Herzog Road. So I went up on the levee, followed the smell, and it came to this dog food factory industrial plant. I observed tons of concrete, it's not a farming process at all, and lots and lots of trucks driving super fast down the road. From little I know, the intent of the Williamson Act is to kind of limit industrial impacts in favor of agriculture, and I guess my observation would be this is not agriculture. But basically, the fumes from this facility were unbearable for us to enjoy that beautiful area. My wife got headaches, and I would sometimes get a little bit nauseous, and it wasn't possible to bring our children to the houseboat at all. So difficult to sleep in these conditions for young children, we're really concerned about the long-term health risks, such strong toxic fumes. So consequently, we were forced to move. We moved a mile down Snodgrass Slough, which was okay until the winds died down or shifted, and then it was unbearable again. So this location is about two miles from the processing plant. So we moved again about three or four miles away, and prevailing wind pattern was not in our, in our direction, so that was okay, except for the occasional north wind, and then it was impossible, we had to leave the boat again. So I'd just like to say, you know, I think I represent a large number of recreational boaters and fishermen that use the same slough, but you'll never hear from. And I know that it impacts them because they've come by many times and asked me if the smell, if it's toxic smell or if their families, I know they're impacted. So my, in the, we have children, but it's really an environmental hazard because of the health risk, and I can't, there's much hope of revenue for goat, and also for health risks. I just said.
Can you please conclude your remarks?
So why was the word?
Can you please conclude your remarks, sir?
Potential long-term health risks. Well, because of.
Can you please conclude your remarks, sir?
So.
Losing a minute of race.
Right. That would be, in four, with the opinion.
I need to be able to.
Sir?
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 Sir? Your three minutes is up. Thank you.
Okay.
This is the last comment.
Okay.
Please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to make your comment. If you're listening to the meeting in the background, please silence that while you're talking, and go ahead and start with your comments.
Dr. Alvin Greenberg. Please let me know if you can hear me.
We can, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I'm a PhD toxicologist retained by American River Ag. My past experience, just very briefly, includes having served in Cal OSHA as Assistant Deputy Chief for Health in the first Jerry Brown administration, and then Governor Brown appointed me to the Cal OSHA Standards Board. I also, in the past, have served as the Chair of the Bay Area Air Quality Management District Hearing Board. I'd like to just very briefly give my perspective on the health impact concerns voiced by some speakers, even though I realize that health impacts are really not before you today and will be, however, addressed during any conditional use permit proceedings. I want to state unequivocally that the risk and hazard to public health is less than significant, and I say that based upon objective scientific testing and findings such as the ones just mentioned by Dr. Schmidt, but I also conducted some additional testing. Please keep in mind that the mere presence of a compound does not in and of itself mean that a public health risk exists. The basic toxicological principle is that the dose makes the poison, and therefore you must have three factors that coexist in order to create a risk to public health. The first is a substance has to have some intrinsic toxicity. Second is there has to be a certain amount present of that substance. And the third thing is that a person has to be exposed to that certain amount of substance. Items, factors, rather, two and three are not present in the areas, the homes distant to American River Ag. And when I use the term distant, I mean greater than approximately 1,500 feet away. Air dispersion modeling conducted by experts in our group, as well as the air district, confirm that even at the point of the nearest residence, which is a half a mile away, that's approximately 2,400 feet away, the airborne concentration probably couldn't even be measured of any substance that comes off of the potatoes when they are drying.
Can you please conclude your remarks?
I won't belabor the point anymore.
Can you please conclude your remarks?
My testimony is completed.
Thank you.
That concludes the public comments.
All right, thank you. So before we hear from American River Ag representatives to address any of the public comments, and just to kind of put a bow on things before we deliberate, I want to thank everyone that took time to call in, and regardless of which side of this issue you may be on, the fact that you stayed with us as long as you did and tolerated what is sometimes a clumsy telephonic protocol here, given the fact that we're trying to minimize exposure during this pandemic, I just want to express my appreciation as Chair of the Board for your patience. I too want to thank especially those speakers who, as Supervisor Kennedy alluded to earlier, with some of his line of questioning, really focused in on what is in front of us today for consideration, and that is not necessarily the merits or lack thereof relative to the use and activity that is and has been going on at the site, but this is really about whether or not we conclude that findings have been made and presented, and find those findings for consideration of a cancellation of a Williamson Act contract, and not necessarily the, again, the nuisance issues or the smells out there, doesn't mean that they're not important, they certainly are. But again, I just want to take the opportunity to remind folks that, again, we are considering the merit simply of the prospect of a Williamson Act contract cancellation this evening. So with that, I'd like to give American River Ag representatives, like I mentioned, a few minutes to wrap up if they wish to take that time. You don't have to, but I want.
Thank you, Chair Serna. This is Andrea Monarazzo. We just need a few minutes. We'd like to have Christina Irwin from Environmental Science Associates speak directly to the point you just made, which is the Williamson Act cancellation findings, and then also just a couple of quick corrections of the factual record by John Conboy.
Okay, do you think five minutes is going to be plenty of time?
I think so.
Great, thank you.
Hello, my name is Christina Irwin with ESA. We prepared a general plan policy analysis memorandum back in December with the goal of evaluating whether or not the existing and proposed uses on the project site were compatible with the county's general plan policies. What we noted in our analysis is that the existing onsite uses are compatible with the general plan policies. The general plan policies explicitly promote agricultural uses, including preserving prime agricultural lands from urban encroachment, promoting a healthy agricultural industry, encouraging local processing facilities, and preserving activities that involve the primary processing of agricultural products. The uses onsite are clearly compatible with the policies in agriculture, delta protection, economic development, conservation, land use, and open space elements of the general plan. The Director's determination regarding incompatibility of the existing and proposed uses conflicts with three specific general plan policies. AG24 encourages the enrollment of prime ag land into the Williamson Act program. Policy AG25 encourages landowners to enter into Williamson Act contracts and encourages the county to provide support to keep property in the Williamson Act by allowing agricultural-friendly land use practices that, through a variety of incentives. And general plan policy DP-2 requires that the county promote and facilitate agricultural and agriculturally-supported commercial and industrial uses as the primary lands within the primary zone of the delta. So given that, although there have been different definitions of the interpretation of the word "processing," our research has indicated that there is a clear linkage between agricultural-supported uses, such as the project applicant's existing uses, and the successive Williamson Act lands. In summary, the existing onsite uses are consistent and compatible with general plan policies, except where the Director has found an inconsistency and a different determination.
So this is Andrea again. So the point there being that there are two potential pathways that the staff report presents to allow the facility to move forward with the use permit, either cancel the contract or modify, and we believe that there's information in the record and in the staff report that would support either pathway, and we ask that you, that you observe the staff recommendation and analysis and let us go forward with the use permit process. And John Conboy just has a few comments to wrap up.
Yeah, I just wanted to put some information in related to this reduction in our tonnage. We did have an airboard reduction in tonnage as we were doing our scientific studies to make sure that we could meet that, those compliance levels. That reduction in tonnage was on an annual basis. Our reduction on a given week would be the exact same. So if there was odors that would be or would not be there, that tonnage that was on our facility in a given week or two weeks would be the exact same as in full production. The product being shipped in from all over the place and nothing locally, that's incorrect. We get in some months up to 70, 80% of our product from the delta. Annually, it's probably 30, 40, probably 40% annually from the delta region. These potatoes, sweet potatoes, are not rotten. These are food-grade, fresh-market potatoes that we are either harvesting ourselves or contracted direct from growers. These are their byproducts that, for some reason, are not able to be sold in stores. Some of the sweet potatoes we get in are the size of a basketball. They're misshapen, they're too small, they're too big, they have a blemish on them. It's something that you wouldn't want to buy in a supermarket just because it looks different. It could have fell on the floor, things of that sort. So these are not rotten potatoes. Those are the only comments I had, just wanted to straighten those out. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Does that conclude then American River Agriculture's concluding remarks? I assume it does.
Yes, it does, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, so bringing it back to the board then for consideration, and why don't we start with hearing from our county council briefly about kind of the full spectrum of what our options really are today?
So I think your options are today to either, on a four-fifths vote, accept the findings in the staff report and approve the cancellation, or of course, if you don't have a four-fifths vote for that, then you can always deny the request for cancellation. The middle ground would be a modification option. If the board is interested in that option, then my recommendation would be that we continue this matter and direct staff to go back and research whether modification would be consistent with the Williamson Act. I said I got the materials from Andrea Monarazzo pretty late today. I did glance at the Butte County ordinance that she attached. It did appear that Butte County allows processing under a Williamson Act contract, but I would have, we would have to confirm that. So if we wanted to go that route, I would suggest continuing this, go down that path, see whether that's a viable option, and then come back in whatever time of month or, you know, whatever is a reasonable time.
Okay, thank you. And again, that last middle ground option really is only relevant if there's enough interest on the board to move it in that direction.
Correct, and you would only need a three-fifths vote to continue it. You would need, obviously, you'd need four-fifths if you want to cancel anything else you want to do. And let me just say one more thing, if the inclination is simply to you don't want, you don't want to cancel the Williamson Act contract, you don't need to make alternative findings. You can just, if it doesn't meet the vote threshold, then no additional, no other findings need to be made. Findings are only required if you're going to cancel.
Okay, thank you for that, Krista. Okay, who would like to start us off? I see Mr. Natale reaching for the speaker queue button there. Go ahead.
Well, thank you, Ms. Chair, and certainly thanks to my colleagues. Obviously, this has been a lengthy hearing, and I think that goes to the seriousness of the matter before us, and certainly to the expression of interest by all those who've weighed in today, and I want to thank again certainly the county council and planning staff for their work. I know that they have spent a good deal of time, I think, in their analysis, whether one agrees with it or not, certainly I think have probed this, going back to, you know, a year ago or more now, obviously with the finding that the plan director made in her determination last year, and obviously what has transpired since then, so it's with, you know, certainly, thanks and appreciate. the, you know, certainly thanks and appreciation for that level of work. I guess I would, again, recognizing what we've heard today, and again, I thank the callers, we've heard from a variety of folks, including those who are, you know, in the legal end of it, those who by profession do testing as it relates to certain aspects of air quality and such. We've also heard from employees and those that are involved in the operation that's been referenced here, the American River Agriculture Processing Facility, and we've heard from adjacent and immediate residents in the area and folks who they themselves have been engaged in farming for, in many cases, for generations. And so, again, I'm appreciative of hearing from folks. We've received, you know, volumes of written information and I think has given this, certainly this Board member and I'm sure my colleagues, much to mull over. I want to just say too that the request that's before us, not because just the length of today's hearing or the volume of information, is no small matter. I've been given the privilege of sitting on this Board for more than 25 years, and it's rare that we see a cancellation request before us, but obviously the circumstances that bring this one to us have been explained and I think are understood by Board members and certainly by those who have followed this matter and weighed in, and so the gravity of what we're being asked to do is also reflected, and as Krista just said a moment ago, Ms. Whitman just said, you know, requires a four-fifths vote in the affirmative and certain findings to be made in order to do that. I will also say that, you know, as a member of this Board, I've been given the opportunity, certainly the district that I immediately represent, to have a large segment of the landmass devoted to agricultural pursuits from east to west to southern portions of the county, and I know many of the folks that weighed in today have been active in agriculture, both by their own testimony today, but certainly in their involvement in matters that come before this Board as relates to agricultural production, supporting of agriculture, both within their personal pursuits, but also in their service, some of them have served in capacities with the Farm Bureau over the years, and I know have appeared before this Board on other occasions when agricultural issues have been before us, and so there's, I don't need to vouch for people's credentials, but I just think it's important that some of the folks that we did hear from today have been involved in the capacity in supportive agriculture, but certainly in actively, you know, has livelihoods for generations in agriculture. And I reference that because some of the things we heard about, and I'm going to, I'll get back to the matter here at hand, but folks that aren't unfamiliar with the Williamson Act, some of them may have, may operate on contracted lands themselves, certainly know the value of agriculture, they also know the impacts that can be associated with it, whether it's noise, or odor, or dust, or other activities that are part of normal farming practices. And I think, lastly, that people, as has been said here, has been documented in some of the letters we've received, that people recognize that products that, you know, are grown and produced in this county, and we have over a half a billion dollars in agricultural production in this county annually, and we probably have over 200 different crops that are produced and, you know, provide food and fiber for not only this region and its residents, but for the state and the nation and probably the world in some cases, and that's a tremendous credit to those who actually put that food and certainly produce the products that go on our tables, but also are shared around the world. And the Williamson Act has been a key piece of that. Long before I came to county service, that act was in place. You go back, referenced in some of the contracts, the oldest contracts are late 60s and very early 70s, and granted, agriculture evolves over time with different cropping patterns and depending upon marketplace forces and certainly the desire and willingness of those that are engaged actively in farming and ranching to continue those pursuits. And again, we've been very blessed by a tremendous number of family farms in this community, and that Williamson Act has been a key, a keystone, and again, this Board has talked about it, and I certainly know that during the service of some of us, we've talked about how the state has or hasn't supported, both in some of the fiscal impacts, but also what it means to have those contracted lands as it relates to supporting and promoting agriculture and agricultural production, and also the open space benefits that accrue. And I guess lastly, I would say, in prefacing my position, where we are today, is that agricultural areas are not devoid of residents. You have folks who reside there that may be large, you know, land plots and parcels, but folks that live and work and raise their families in those areas, as I said, certainly are very much in tune with necessities and the aspects of farming, but they're also, they're the keystone of the fabric of the community, and takes nothing away from someone who's in a business pursuit, who employs folks, who may likewise contribute to the community, and we heard some testimony along those lines today. But for some of the things I've cited, and I think in having thought about this, as I'm sure we all have, you know, the objectives of the Williamson Act, it's not just a policy document, it's the force of effect and encouraging folks to stay in agricultural pursuits, to maintain those pursuits, and to accrue whatever tax benefits go with that, does have an impact on the agricultural matrix in this county, and I think, you know, what we do on this matter, but certainly what we do on matters related to the Williamson Act are unimportant, and yes, people can say they may be president and secretary or not, but I think they, you know, serve a particular purpose in highlighting the importance of the act, and I think the integrity of how it's administered. And again, you know, certainly inconsistencies can occur over time and with different interpretations, but I do think that, again, the Planning Department, not only in the recommendation they brought to us today, but in their, you know, in the prior review of this, looked at it very closely and certainly had legal counsel at their side to do that. And in the final summation though, is that, and I kind of alluded to this in at least some of the questions I asked earlier in the afternoon, you know, this finding of the public interest, and I think it was fair for the staff to point out that that's probably one most subject to interpretation, that that's a number of considerations, and I, again, I don't downplay jobs and job, you know, job creation and certainly making use of byproducts, and as Doug Chan said in his commentary, you know, certainly that's commendable that you can take some of that product and turn it to other usable products. But in my final, certainly, analysis thought of this, I think that it's important that we stand behind the act as it's been certainly interpreted, the Act Advisory Committee, we, I know that the Delta Assistant Advisor Council took it up under a different guise, and we didn't have anything formally before us, so I know how that fits into the equation, but we've had folks who, again, who've been actively involved in agriculture, who advised us, it's not, you know, something that people take pleasure if you're going to make a decision that may affect, you know, someone's livelihood as it relates to their job and so forth. On the other hand, there are a lot of livelihoods that depend upon agriculture in this community. You know, the farm gate is one measure, but also the folks that are employed and actively in farming on a seasonal as well as on a year-round basis is a critical part of the economic infrastructure and certainly fabric of our community. So, where I am today, and I would encourage my colleagues to certainly consider very strongly that we deny the request to cancel, I'm not interested in pursuing some modification to the contract, and I think that adherence to the, I think, the intent of the act and certainly how it's been administered over the years, again, it may be as imperfect as that might be, it's important, and I do think that if we were to cancel in this case, it's not the circumstance that guides every other circumstance, but I think it may send a very strong message to others about how either historically and/or going forward, they can approach something that would, you know, lead to a similar and/or similar request, but that's for the future. But for today, for here and now, I would be prepared to move to deny the cancellation request as a matter of our action here today. Thanks.
Supervisor Frost.
Okay, well, let's see. I hope I can articulate this. I have a lot going through my head right now, and I first want to start by saying that I'm sensitive to all the complaints about the smells and the air quality and the bugs. I know today, we're, that's not what we're discussing. What we're discussing today is the Williamson Act and the law as it relates to a person's right to request or petition to be in or out of the Williamson Act. And so, I just want to express to all the callers, I want to thank you. I know that there's a lot, there's a process, and I trust that that process will move forward and that we will hopefully, our staff will hopefully be able to find a way that this use can be compatible. I mean, that would be the ultimate, the ultimate goal would be that we could, we could promote, have the Williamson Act intact and have ag and processing and have it all complement and have everyone happy with what's out there. I do want to say that this is a, you know, the staff determined that this is a normal use in an agricultural zone, that it's compatible with the general plan. I know the ag community and the Farm Bureau and the ag committee, County's Ag Committee, have stressed the importance of ag and processing, so it's, so the processing is important, but, and in the Williamson Act, processing is included, but it doesn't specifically identify winners and losers on what can be processed, and I'm not sure it's our job today to determine what can and can't be processed. I think that is part of the process of a use permit. I believe, based on what council has told us and what our staff have told us, that the American River Ag has a legal right to petition to withdraw from the Williamson Act. I'm not, I think that's a, it's a big deal, because we do want to encourage and protect the Williamson Act lands, but they have a right as the owner of the property to petition for that, and they have met the conditions of that withdrawal, that after, you know, extensive review from our staff. I heard in our conversations that the county can tentatively move forward to cancel the Williamson Act pending permit approval. There was, there was a need for clarity on that, and we would have to continue this process in order to understand that further, or that there might be a possibility that the county can alter the, you know, or amend the Williamson Act contracts. Anything around that is huge, because it sets a precedent and could impact the entire ag community. So I'm not saying that recklessly. I think what I'm, what I'm, where my, my intent behind that comment is that I think, I feel bad that they have to request to be out of the Williamson Act when they're, you know, when they are processing agriculture, when they're processing, and so if there was a way to process their sweet potatoes that would work within the community that they're in, maybe some technology that could manage the smells and the, you know, air quality that would like, that would just change the whole direction of the process and the, and the whole, I guess, the whole temperature of, you know, the community's thoughts around all this. So, I, I am, if I just take out all of the, you know, information except that, that which we are looking at today, which is, does this property owner have a right to request, to petition to be out of the Williamson Act, and have they met those requirements, then I'm inclined to support their request. But I, I think, and I, and I know, we heard them say that they would prefer to stay in the Williamson Act, and I think it would be great if we could continue this process and explore, is there a way that this use permit can be issued that, and that we can get through some of these other contentious details and actually have them remain in the Williamson Act? So, I would support continuing this and reviewing some possibilities. I do have one question of council, and that is, is there a timeline on if, if we were to approve the Williamson Act cancellation tentatively, can they then move forward to, toward a use permit that's acceptable to the county, and with that being conditioned upon them being compliant or with the Williamson Act or leaving the William, finalizing their application, and if not, can they, if they can receive that use permit and remain in, can they cancel the tentative approval?
So, I was glancing at the statutes two hours ago, forgot all the details, but they, we could, if the Board could do, add a condition to a cancellation of the Williamson Act, which would include a requirement that they obtain all permits necessary for the project. So you could, if the Board was so inclined, you could cancel the contract, have it be conditioned upon them receiving a use permit. If they don't receive the use permit, then, then the Board will, has to execute a certificate of withdrawal of tentative approval of cancellation of a contract. I don't see a timeframe in here as to how much time they have to get that use permit. I don't think that's specified in the statute. So that's one option. What I wanted to clarify though is, what I had suggested as a possible middle ground would be to continue the item and direct staff to go back and consider whether a modification of the contract, which would allow processing only, would be acceptable under the Williamson Act statutes, not the question about whether the uses are currently compatible with the contract, because I feel like that issue is closed.
Right.
So if there was a continuance, it would just be, in my view, to direct us to go back and look into whether modification would work.
Modifying the contract rather than exiting the Williamson Act?
Right. Modifying the contract to allow these uses, they would still have to go get a use permit, because they're not in compliance right now, so they'd still have to get the use permit, but it would just keep them in the, if that was approved, it would keep them in the Williamson Act and allow them, if they get the use permit, to continue to operate.
Okay. So to sum up my thoughts, I, you know, I'm, I am sensitive to the neighbors and to the, to what's happening out there, and I, but I'm also sensitive to the owner, the property owner and their, their right to petition to leave the Williamson Act, and I, I could, I could support their leaving, but I think for them, it would be great if they could stay in the Williamson Act and we could work all this out and not have to go there. Thank you.
Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. I would just want to say I agree with Supervisor Natale, and I'll second the motion, and I know it's difficult, I agree with most of your sentiments about, it's a very hard decision, but I think we tend to fall on the side of the residents this way, and so, don't want to go over it all again.
Okay. Supervisor King. Okay, so I'll conclude and then we'll, we'll take our vote. So again, I just want to express my appreciation to both parties and all the members of the public, again, that took time to call in today and express their position and their interest in this matter, and it is a difficult decision, and there's a strong tradition, as I mentioned, to both the opposition and the applicant, that there's, there is a lot of deference, as there, I think should be, in the healthy way that we do business, do the public's business here in Sacramento County, there's a healthy amount of deference to each of us when it comes to land use matters and issues. a healthy amount of deference to each of us when it comes to land use matters and issues of land use in the districts that we are honored to represent. And it doesn't necessarily mean that we operate as rubber stamps, we don't. As you, I think you can tell just by some of the comments already from my colleagues, we're, I think, very deliberate and very thoughtful about any of these issues that come before us, regardless of if they happen or proposed or opposed in our districts or So there's a bit of, for me, tempering what I'm saying here with certainly respecting that and respecting my colleague, Mr. Natoli, and his, the fact is that he knows his district better than anyone, and certainly his tenure on the board, combined with that duty to represent the south part of the county, I think speaks volumes about his ability to really know the neighbor's condition, know the challenges in front of the applicant. But I do, it does make me a little itchy, quite frankly, though, that it feels like with supporting the motion, it feels like we're foreclosing an opportunity. I think it's similar to perhaps what Supervisor Frost articulated, feels like we're foreclosing an opportunity to find a mutually agreeable solution here relative to conditions. And I know that, that much of that has to do with the process that, you know, has transpired thus far that brought us to today. I think in a perfect world, we'd find a way to let American River Ag continue to pursue their operations that make them whole economically, but that would certainly be conditioned so that they minimize the clear impacts that they're having on the surrounding, the surrounding community. And it feels to me, again, like if we do nothing more than deny the application to cancel today, that we're foreclosing that opportunity. And I, so I think I, you know, I appreciated our county council expressing what she did in terms of perhaps there being a slight change to a process that might give us a little bit of the middle ground to work out. But it's obviously clear by the numbers up here and the fact that we do need a supermajority of the board on this, this item, that the votes, regardless of how I feel at this point, just aren't there for this particular action. But I did want to be very candid about what I'm feeling at this point and why I'm willing to go along with the motion, mostly out of respect for my colleague who represents the 5th District. But I think it is a bit tragic that we're foreclosing on an ability to, I think, find a solution here.
I would just clarify that you need a four-fifths vote in order to approve the cancellation. You would need a three-fifths vote in order to continue the item to consider.
Okay.
I just want to say one other thing I forgot to say. Somewhere in all the documents that we had, there was a suggestion that the ag committee or commission, I'm not sure which it is, take a look at what acceptable uses are in the, in these situations. And I wonder if that might be, going forward some way, we could, again, Don's been here 30 years, and this is the first time it's come up, so probably it doesn't come that often, but it may very well in the future, there's not that much ag land left. I think that might be something worth discussing.
Okay. All right. Any further comments by board members? If not, there is a motion and a second, so we will vote.
What is the motion again?
To deny the cancellation.
Okay, please vote.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Frost voting no.
All right.
Okay, we do have an off-agenda comment that needs to be read into the record. This was a request for an accommodation. Okay. Hello, my name is Shanna. I am a nurse, mother of three, and a concerned citizen living in Galt, California. Two of my children, Noah, 5th grade, and Abram, 1st grade, go to Marengo Ranch Elementary School. I am writing this because of the recent news of schools offering exclusively a virtual learning platform. I am hoping that this board meeting will present options for children of essential workers, along with special education, deaf, blind, autistic, and children with learning disabilities like ADHD, that would inhibit their ability to learn at the fullest potential if the virtual is offered. Options might include allowing willing teachers to teach children of parents willing to put their children back in school, whether because of work or because of physical and mental disabilities. Parents could sign waivers to release liability if need be. Also, more than online, live interaction with teachers from lesson through homework completion for any questions they may have. I can't teach exhausted kids at 7:00 PM every night, possibly weekend classes. Virtual learning would leave so many children behind. My son Noah's first comment, when I told him about the start of the school year, was, so my teachers don't care about me? How am I going to log in and go to Zoom meetings if I'm at daycare all day? I wanted to cry and still do not have an answer for my son. Please consider all students when you plan for the opening of schools. We pay our taxes and raise our children in the country, because all children are entitled to education, no matter what their situation. Please remember the following law and have options for every child. Thank you for your time and consideration. And she is citing the California Education Code Title II, Elementary and Secondary Education, Division 4, Instruction and Services, Article 3, School Plan, Section 52853.
Thank you. Okay.
And that's all I have.
I just wanted to suggest that to that writer, in case she's unaware, she should be sending those comments to her school district.
Yes.
I'm not sure what the name of that.
Yeah, it's going to be the Galt Elementary District, I believe, so make sure to get to the superintendent down there. Good suggestion.
Because the board supervisor doesn't have any jurisdiction.
Okay. CEO, have any comments?
No comments.
Okay. Board members' comments? Supervisor Frost.
I just want to say that today is my 36th wedding anniversary, and I want to send a shout out to my husband to tell him I love him. So I love you, Jack.
Nice. Congratulations.
Get you home before seven.
Way to stay married. Yes.
I'm sorry, I was not aware that there was an off-agenda caller waiting to come in. I did not know that, that was a miscommunication, and I lost the phone call.
Okay. What would you like us to do?
I believe the phone caller was Martha Esch calling, so I, here we go. Caller, please state your name for the record. Do you have three minutes to make your comment? And please silence the meeting in the background while you're talking.
Thank you. I am declining to state my name, because under Brown Act, it is not required for public comment. My off-agenda comment is in regard to ongoing illegal board appointments, treasury allocations, and Brown Act violations without any public meetings or elections of the Lock Management Association, LMA. Senator Wykowski's recent election bill, Senate Bill 323, came into law on January 1, 2020. It also applies to Lock Management Association. Appointments to the Lock boards are no longer legal, as Senate Bill 323 requires elections by the membership, and board members must be candid, or board members must be general members. So Darrell Wu is not a general member of Lock Management Association, since he is not a, does not own property in Lock, and he cannot legally be a board member, nor can he appoint any other individuals. And the appointees that he claims to have made in the last week cannot be board members Elections are required under the law. Public meetings are required under the law. A Brown Act sure and correct letter to Sacramento County Board of Supervisors and Lock Management Association is being sent today. Thank you for allowing my public comment.
Thank you. Okay. Any others?
No.
Okay. I just had one comment, more of a shout out, and it's been said, I think, by all of us in recent weeks and months, but again, just want to express my support, our support for our Public Health Officer, Dr. Olivia Casiri, and our Health Services Director, Dr. Peter Bealenson. It seems like there's not a day that goes by that we don't see them, our broadcast media, especially this morning. I had the chance to see Dr. Bealenson in action again, in front of the Midtown Business Association, explaining where we are relative to the pandemic. And you can tell just by, I think, sometimes a level of fatigue that we see in both of these health professionals in service to Sacramento County, that they are really going over and above in terms of their willingness to not just keep us well informed, but certainly be very instrumental in deploying the resources we need to combat the virus here in our county. And I just want to, again, express appreciation to both of them on behalf of the board supervisors. All right. With that, if there's no further business for this board, we are adjourned.